Good evening, members of the public. And thank you for joining us at this West Orange Board of Education meeting this evening on April 19th. And I'd like to greet our superintendent, Dr. Cascone, and my fellow members of the board. And Mrs. Flowers, would you please do us the honor of roll call?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Roll call. Mrs. Huerta?
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Here.
President Trick Scales?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. And now we're looking at the consideration of the closed meeting minutes of March 18th and 22nd, and the public meeting minutes of March 18th, 22nd, and 25th. That is attachment one. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Flowers.
Okay. Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are now to our student liaison report, and we have our illustrious representatives with us, Ms. Elliston and Ms. Ridley. I did see you there. Where are you?
Hi. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming tonight. We just have a few pretty brief announcements. So first, for the Western Orange High School musicals coming up soon, of course, we typically do, we're doing something a little bit different this year because we weren't able to produce, you know, a show normally, because as we all know, this year's definitely been quite strange. So instead, we're sort of doing a review of just the shows that the high schools produced in the past 20 years. And the musical itself is a sort of medley of all of the songs taken from each of these shows to kind of create one story arc. And it's very, very exciting. So the show dates are this Friday and Saturday. At, I think there is a two o'clock matinee and an eight o'clock show on Saturday, and then Friday, there's just a nine o'clock show. Tickets are available online on the West Orange Schools homepage. And they're $15 each. They are taking place at Ospac, which is an outdoor venue. And social distance rules will be in effect and will apply. This performing arts program is definitely very, you know, important to both me and Andre. And, you know, the school musical definitely holds a very special place in my heart because I think the arts community and kind of the arts program in Western Orange Schools has kind of been like a staple for my personal experience. That's how I started, got, that's, I mean, I think like school theater is how I got involved in theater in general, and that was in middle school. And I've kind of fallen in love with it ever since. And so it's kind of sad that I have to say goodbye as a senior to me and Andre. Have to say goodbye to the arts program or just, you know, West Orange Theater as we move on to college. But it's definitely something that's been very, very special to the both of us. So we definitely encourage you. It really mean a lot to us if you could come and see the musical. We are super, super excited about it. So, and very excited that we are able to produce live theater even, you know, amidst everything that's going on. Also, the last meeting, I mentioned Escriptus, which is the National English Honor Society at West Orange High School. We were, we were working to produce a sort of common read where basically it's kind of like a school-wide book club, if you will, that was available to teachers and students who, you know, we read a book. And then we hosted an event where we kind of discussed the book. The book this year was The Nickel Boys, and our event took place on, like, April last week sometime. And it definitely went well. It was, it was really, you know, I think The Nickel Boys by Colson Whitehead is just truly such an important book and extremely relevant to everything that's going on right now. It kind of dealt with themes of just like race and trauma and healing and kind of the kind of implications of the historical violence against young black men. And it's, it's just a truly just incredible book. And it was such a thrill to have so many people, you know, students and teachers alike, to come together and have a very meaningful discussion about the book and its themes. And, you know, it was, it was really, really great. So that, I, that, that was certainly very exciting. And Escriptus is currently in the process of trying to plan a future poetry event. April is National Poetry Month. And so we are trying to plan an event, like a sort of poetry workshop for the elementary schools. It is, to my understanding, that each year Escriptus does, does some sort of kind of activity with the elementary schools where they go or students go and they read to the students. So of course, we're trying to Zoomify that event as well this year. So yeah, that plan is in the works, and we hope to have it up and running by the end of the month. It would most likely just be kind of a Zoom workshop for elementary school students where we could talk about different types of poetry and then give the students the opportunity to write their own and share. And it's definitely something we're very, very excited about. That covers my part of the agenda. Andre, you want to hop in?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so all of my seniors, we all know that College Decision Day is coming up very soon. May 1st, in fact, a lot sooner than we thought, kind of scary. But as you guys are deciding, all of our news will be posted on the 2021 College Decision Instagram run by the Student Council. And if you want to follow them, it's W O H S 2021 College Decisions with the S, so plural. I'll say it again, at W O H S 2021 College Decisions. I think that finishes my portion, too.
Fabulous. May 1st. How exciting. So thank you ladies so much. And I know that the community is excited about the play, and we're looking forward to it. And that brings us to the superintendent and board reports. So Dr. Cascone, you want to get us started?
Sure. Thank you, President Trick Scales. Good evening, members of the board, our student liaisons. Thank you for those reports. Always a pleasure to hear those. And to the members of our community who are here and attend us tonight, thank you for joining us. Just a few, a few just kind of informational updates. I wanted to just provide some brief information regarding school reopening. Today, we did resume with our hybrid instruction. I spent some time down at Redwood Elementary School. And it was a beautiful day, beautiful, sunshiny day. It was great. Great to see the kids, great to see the kids together and just listen to them chit chat with one another. They seemed very excited to be back after the two-week quarantine. And we're looking forward to beginning to get them in more. We've received the board, and I have received a lot of feedback, good feedback, good questions, in particular with regard to our Fridays. And so I can tell you that I am meeting with our elementary principals tomorrow to kind of work through a couple of things. And the community can expect a communication later in the week with some updates for May 3rd start. And so that's, that's kind of where we are with that, with our secondary schools. You know, we continue to kind of fill in our cohorts with those students who are in the greatest need. But we are continuing to keep an eye on the situation, the public health situation, the level of risk in the community. I know that it is, believe me, it's as frustrating to me as the superintendent is. I know it is to a lot of parents and probably students as well that our community and much of the state still remains in that high-risk range. I had shared with the community in some letters previously that, you know, we are following the revised CDC guidelines, the revised New Jersey Department of Health guidelines, which do not recommend closing the social distance between secondary learners from six to three feet until such time that the community is in the moderate range of risk. Presently, West Orange is still in the high range, though the state is showing some, some positive trends. There are a couple of counties, a couple of regions, rather, that have recently moved down to the moderate range, and so we're optimistic. I did, in my communication, note that we would be looking to see a two-week continuation of that moderate level of risk. And really, the reason for that is, and I know that that might be also frustrating to some folks and seem sort of indiscriminate. But, you know, I can tell you that, you know, every, every, every provision which I include in my correspondence in the plan is, is not something where I just kind of pull it out of the hat, but rather it's something that I discuss with our partners in the Department of Health as well as our district position. And, and so we want to see that that trend is, has some degree of stability, some degree of traction. Because what we would hate to do is, is start a program only to reverse it the following week. But we are optimistic that we are going to see that trend continue and be able to get our, compress our secondary cohorts and get them in every week. You'll notice on this agenda, the board, and it was obviously reviewed the agenda, it's been posted to the public. But you'll notice that there are several support and summer programs. We have begun to finalize those proposals and move them forward for board approval. And so you'll see that there is a middle school academic support program for English language learners. And this is similar to programs which have been up and running in our elementary school for a number of weeks now. And it's, these are programs that are funded with the help of the E S S A grant, formerly the N C L B grant. This particular one is funded out of the Title III immigrant grant. And it is really, there's a program based in each of the middle schools and is really an opportunity to provide some additional academic support for our English language learners or ESL students. And you'll see, we have a summer, a summer program for our high school and our middle school. Now, these programs are, at the high school, is really an expanded program on what was offered in the past to include additional content areas and additional staff because we understand that we can have some increased needs. Now, this is a need-based program and kind of is enrolled similarly to how a summer school would be enrolled, as well as the middle school program where students who might have failed multiple classes and where students are, for lack of a better word, you know, they're obliged to attend, but strongly encouraged to attend, or they would need to make up the class the following year. We are, as you'll note on the agenda, a portion of the high school program is projected to be funded out of the S R 2 grant. Some of that is local funds, and the middle school program will be funded exclusively through the S R 2. The board and community can expect that there will be some additional programs being moved forward. Those will include elective programming, elective summer programming, K through 12, which is presently being developed by our curriculum and instruction team, and as well as a K-12, a social emotional support program, as well as basic skills programs for basic skill students and English language learners. So the board could expect that those programs would be moved forward, most likely at the May 10th board meeting for adoption, which totals out between $400,000 and $500,000 in local funds, as well as grant funds, will be used to fund a wide range of summer programs. And of course, we also do have the Summer Enrichment Program, the Annual Summer Enrichment Program, which is tuition-based. Last week, I just wanted to note, and I was joined by, by several board members as well. We attended the Stop Asian Hate Vigil, which was on Tuesday, April 13th, at 6 o'clock. It was on the, the steps of the West Orange Municipal Building and was organized through the emceed, if you will, by Dr. David Jones, who's a St. Cloud parent, but also recently appointed to the head of the Human Relations Commission through the West Orange Township. And it was, we were glad to be there. You know, it felt good to be there, to come out in support of our Asian-American Pacific Islander American community members. And from that event, and, you know, and I've always been a believer that out of tragedy, out of adversity, you know, comes hope and comes, you know, good things and progress. And so what, what has come out of that and the more recent, you know, things that have occurred in our country and heat crimes and worse killings in our country is, is, you know, our members of our Asian-American Pacific Islander community have, have begun to reach out to the administration and the board very, very civilly, very, very collaboratively, which is really always greatly appreciated, and said, you know, you know, would the district, you know, get out in front and advocate more, more consistently, more strongly in its recognition of our Asian-American Pacific Islander Americans and townsfolk? And, and the answer to that is yes, right? So in a year where we've been placing a critical eye on equity, you know, placing a critical eye and ensuring that our curricular programs and our school environments are equally inclusive of all folks, the upcoming month of May, which you may not be aware, is Asian-American Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. And so, you know, in speaking with our curriculum team and our principals, we're very excited to really be approaching this month with a renewed commitment and a renewed energy to really demonstrate through our acknowledgement of this month our support and solidarity with our, our Asian-American Pacific Islander American students and community members. So stay tuned, some exciting things that we'll be doing in the upcoming month to recognize that. And finally, although it seems like it's a, a long way off at this point in time, I am excited for Saturday because I will be coming up to West Orange, you know, to do some planting of trees and supporting our, the high school's Fight for Green Club. I'm excited to be, you know, teaming up with a group of, of those, those students to do some tree planting on Saturday. And then I'll segue that directly into a matinee of the spring musical over at Ospac. So it promises to be a great day and much-needed contact with students. Because I got to tell you, that's probably what I miss most about operating with this environment is not having the opportunity to interact with students and to see the great things that our students do on a regular basis. So that is all I have for this evening. I know we have a lot of folks here who will likely comment during public comment and look forward to hearing what they have to say and providing what, what information and feedback they can. So thank you, President Trick Scales. That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. And I know the board looks forward to the activities that the district will be planning for the month of May as we celebrate Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So thank you so much. Okay, and we're now going to move into board reports. I will remind our community that you see us here at board meetings. And please, by no stretch of your imagination, believe that this is the only time that we do board work. We are on board committees. And so at this time, I'm going to ask our committee folks if they would share what's been done on committee and what's coming up in the future. So we're going to start with policy. So that would be Ms. Merklinger and Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you so much, President Trick Scales. Ms. Merklinger, actually, I wrote down a few notes that I'm happy to go through unless you wanted to introduce the topic.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. So policy is really, it's been a big effort for the previous board and for this board with a goal of completing the adoption of a new slate of policies by, by June this year. And we're getting close. We have, as of this moment, we have 149 policies remaining to be approved. After tonight, if all goes well, that'll be reduced by 22, will be down to 127. I didn't count the total number, but it's, it's many hundreds of policies and then bylaws and regulations. So it's been a lot of work over many, many months to get to this point, and the light is at the end of the tunnel. We have four upcoming policy workshops where we'll hopefully work our way through the remaining set of policies. So between those and regularly scheduled school board meetings, we'll be able to approve the remainder of the policies that require attention. The dates of those policy workshops, April 26th, that's a Monday, May 20th, Thursday, June 10th, Thursday, and June 14th, Monday. And so each of these policies that's remaining to be approved is going through second readings, a little bit of cleanup on language, review by, by various different members of the board and by the administration. We'll get to our second readings at the upcoming meetings and get those approved. And the last couple of things that I wanted to say about this, it's been great working with the board. We're, as President Trick Scales mentioned, where we do a lot of work by committee because of the magnitude of this job. The board agreed to work as an entire committee to a large extent to divide up the work and get through it. It's been a really an almost overwhelming amount of reading to get through. And so to the previous chairs of the committee and to Ms. Merklinger and Dr. Cascone, just so much gratitude to you all for rolling up your sleeves and getting, getting into these policies. Once they've all been approved, then Ms. Merklinger and I will work with Strauss S M A to, this is the company who, who drafts the policies and works with us on the revisions of the policies. And they have a website that houses them. It does a better, for anyone in the community who's tried to search for policy information on our current website, it can be a challenge. It can definitely be a challenge. And the Strauss S M A policy platform will be more easily searchable. You'll have an easier time finding the information that you're looking for. So we'll work with them to get that up and running on the website after these have all been adopted, no later than June. And, and that's it. Thank you, thank you again to, to the other members of the board for your hard work. And Ms. Merklinger, if there's anything that you wanted to add to that report, please?
No, you, no, you covered everything, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. I'd like to thank you both. This actually is the third board that's been working on revising our curriculum. And so we do see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it, and it's a good light. So we're really excited about that and appreciate all of the, the hours and the work that you've put in to prep the board for our policy workshops. And now we'll move to town liaison. That would be myself and Ms. Merklinger, who's going to report.
Sure, thank you. So Terry, I, Terry, myself and Scott met with our town council liaison, Michelle Castellino. And, you know, we, what we do is discuss kind of everything that's going on in town. So folks might know, there are some shared services in terms of facilities. One of the items that's currently on the docket and on our radar that we are aware of is some of the potential for the St. Cloud students and families, some development in the, where the current Essex House is and some developments there. It is on our radar. It is something that we are all speaking about. Nothing at this point has, you know, has changed or is to be concerned about just yet. But there are talks going on and, you know, we do recognize that there are some potential safety issues, and we will bring those to light and have representation at the meetings should the plans be moved forward with the zoning and planning boards. But as of right now, that, that is where we stand. Nothing has been put in motion just yet.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Let's move to legislative, and that would be Vice President Tony Cliff and myself. And Vice President Tony Cliff is going to report.
You're muted. Sorry about that. I lost my screen for a second in my effort to read my notes. So the big news coming out of the state is that our waiver was granted for, the Department of Education has approved the NJ DOE's request to skip administering standardized tests this year. So the, that means the NJ S L A will not be administered this spring. Instead, the state will conduct the Start Strong Assessment, which will suffice in meeting the federal requirements for assessment. And I know there's been some debate in the community about getting the appropriate data. And I know there are some concerns in some communities about that skipping the NJ S L A will only, you know, exacerbate our achievement gap. And, but I think it's probably the right move since our kids really need the time in, in the classroom and not taking tests. So I think that's a great step in the right direction. I also got to, which isn't, well, actually, that's not legislative, so I'll do that at the end. So that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. And let's move to public relations. And that's Ms. Merklinger and Ms. Huerta, and who's reporting?
Ms. Merklinger had a plan, I believe. But I can, I could just speak a bit about some of the work, I guess. So we have been putting together dates and reaching out to our local PTAs and our council of PTAs so that we can, as a board, it's been a little difficult. But to be able to be at the PTA meetings and get a better feel for the community engagement in each individual school and just get, you know, build stronger ties with the local schools. Which, by the way, PTAs are in, currently in their nomination and they're planning for the next year. So most of your PTAs will be either reaching out or looking out for executive board positions or leaders to help, you know, the, the next year, the PTA for the next years. And I guess, go ahead, Ms. Merklinger. You can have the rest.
Sure. So we did put together, so Melinda and myself met with our communications team for the district along with Dr. Cascone. We've talked through some of the items that we'd like to see from a PR perspective for the board of ed. Many of you will have noticed, or if you've gone on the W W W dot W O, W O B O E website, that has been revamped, much nicer, everything flows much better and is all coordinated. So that is one of the first pieces that we really want to get updated. We do have some other agenda items that will be reviewed with the rest of the board first before we share those with the rest of the community, just to fine-tune them. But that will be coming out soon.
Great, thank you. And also, we have another committee, which is the liaisons for the Essex County School Boards Association. And I don't think that, I don't think that either Ms. Tony Cliff nor myself have attended. Ms. Huerta, are you saying you have something? Okay, thank you.
Yes, actually, thank you, Mrs. President Terry Trick Scales. So we do have Essex County School Board Association virtual meeting will be May 19th of this year. And I'll just read a quick snippet. It says, "The goal of the Essex County School Board Association is to enhance the, is to enhance the skills and knowledge of local board of education members throughout Essex County. Essex County School Board Association serves as a forum for the exchange of information and ideas and as a catalyst to expedite and initiate action." and as a catalyst to expedite and initiate action. The County School Boards Association meetings are opportunities for board members to receive professional development and up-to-date information on current education initiatives. Legislation and regulation affecting public schools. The meeting enables board members to stay connected and work together to, to advance the achievement of all public school students in New Jersey." That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And I'll wrap up with the negotiations committee. And uh, that is Ms. Tony Cliff and myself representing the board. And we are very, very actively engaged in negotiations. Uh, currently with four different bargaining units. The West Orange Administrators Association, the West Orange Education Association, Local Sixty-eight Hour Head Custodians and Local Sixty-eight Hour Custodians, our maintenance uh, utility, full-time bus drivers and part-time bus drivers. And um, we meet, um, we meet three to four times a month. And uh, as I said, we are actively engaged with each of those bargaining units. Did I forget any committees? Did I leave anyone out?
I don't think so.
Okay. Alrighty, so we're now going to move into questions from the public on agenda items. And just before we do, I would like to um, just ask because we do have um, a large number of participants with us this evening that we really want to hear from everyone and we want to hear everyone's um, individual point of view. And so if, if a subject has been touched upon, we would ask that you would give others who have an opportunity, give them an opportunity to talk about um, what it is that they want to share with the board. And I also just want to mention that um, we anticipate that it may be a long evening and so we probably will be calling for a ten-minute break somewhere between ten and ten-thirty this evening. All right, Ms. Cohen, thank you so much. And these are for agenda items only, comments on agenda items only.
If you would like to speak on agenda items only, um, you're going to use the raise hand function, which several of you already have. Or if you're a phone-in, you can uh, press star nine. I'll announce your name and ask you to follow the prompt that will appear on your screen, which will allow you to talk. And I promise the timer is set for three minutes. I'm not sure why it's showing two forty-eight, but when it starts, it will say three minutes. Nobody, nobody's getting time taken off. So Maten Halsey. And if you can state your name, address, and follow the prompts on the screen.
Hi. Yes, my name is Mden Halsey. My address is twelve Elliott Place, West Orange, New Jersey. I am a uh, Hazel Avenue school parent and I became aware of a change in the staffing. Um, it looks like we are losing our librarian. And I wanted to talk about that because it looks like, you know, when I look at all of the shaping factors and the effect that that could have on our school, it seems like it'd be very detrimental to our uh, school population.
One second. Ms. President Scales, I just want to check. Is this, does this need to wait till the second comment, I believe? I'm getting some yes nods and some no nods.
I'm, I'm talking and, and unmute it all at the same time. Uh, yes, this would, this would be more appropriate in the second session of public comments, um, as this is not on the agenda for this evening. Um, Mr. Halsey. So please hang in there with us. Um, this section is for agenda items only.
Is this not on page three and four of the agenda?
Uh, let me check.
Ms. Trick scale, what?
Three and four.
In Ms. Trick scales, it might be referring, sure, thank you, President Trick Scales. They, they might be, uh, folks might be um, interpreting the um, the motion under appointments um, for the, the library media specialist leave replacement. That that has, that's, you know, that's one in the same, but that's um, that's really just simply a, a leave replacement to, you know, to, to um, uh, to, Mr. Dr. Vespignani could probably, is Dr. Vespignani on the call?
Yes, he is. Hang on one second. Dr. Vespignani, you should be able um, to unmute. Hopefully.
Recognizing he might be limited in what he can share as to the whys and the whereforest, but certainly can speak to the, you know, the rel- the relevance of that item, which I believe is just a leave.
Dr. Vespignani, are you there? You should, oh, there we go. You should have a prompt to unmute, hopefully.
He said he's on. You know what? Um, we will. That is not, that is not um, the same, the same matter, I believe, which folks are coming to the, you know, the public comment to discuss. Um, this is a, a leave period. You'll notice the effective dates on the agenda of four nineteen to five seventeen. Um, this motion impacts simply those dates and it is just for the school year.
Right. So that would not be for the next budget year.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So Mr. Halsey, I'm gonna um, re-mute you and you can come during the second um, public comment period.
Um, before you do that, can you just explain? I, I didn't, I really understand what that, that the Cascone was referring to.
And, and you know, while I'm, while I'm not at liberty to, you know, to discuss the specifics as to why um, this leave is occurring, uh, what you'll notice is that this staff member is being approved to serve as a leave replacement for uh, Ms. Soto for the dates of April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one through May seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one. Um, so this is a short-term leave that has been um, approved upon the request of the staff member. It is, it does not pertain to the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year um, or employment in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Second session is.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, Lauren Wine Shank, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point.
Hi, Lauren Wine Shank, Sixth Curry Lane, West Orange, New Jersey. Uh, thank you for taking my call. I do, uh, from listening to the beginning, it does appear Fridays will get more information uh, through the community. So I appreciate that. But I did have a question regarding the closure of schools and quarantine. Once we do begin reopening more and we do come um, collapse, collapse the cohorts. From my understanding, you know, it's last resort now to close the schools and close the classrooms. And I do know from my knowledge that neighboring districts are now no longer quarantining entire classes. They're instead quarantining children who were within six feet. So you know, if Sam is diagnosed with COVID, but Jane sits twenty-five feet away on the other side in their mask. The question is, will Jane have to be quarantined? Will the whole class have to be quarantined? And the reason I bring this up specifically, um, and I do apologize if I'm wrong, but what I do understand is Dr. Kelly is also the Livingston Physician Representative. And that is what I've been told has happened in Livingston with some of the elementary school classes. So as the kids do come back and we collapse um, cohorts, if there are increase in cases, you know, hopefully the entire school does not need to shut, you know, based on the quarantine period. My other question is with um, the elementary schools, is there any thought to allow recess to happen in any way? And I'm not talking about full day. You know, I'm just talking about, you know, the four-hour period. But um, you know, as kids are coming back and we're trying to get into normalcy and the weather's nice, to have them run around outside. Um, I'm not going to get into the mask issue personally. I'm with the masks even outside, so that's okay. But just to have them have that experience. Uh, so I think those are my two main issues. Cause I do believe everything else will be communicated otherwise. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Maten Halsey, your hands up again. I just, I'm not sure if that is for something agenda-related or if it just stayed up. I just want to double-check. I'm gonna assume it just stayed up. Alrighty, sorry about that. Tez Roro, uh, you may unmute yourself. Uh, state your name and address.
Good evening. Um, Tez Roro, twenty-four Hutton. Um, great to see everyone here and I really appreciated the updates uh, from the different committees, right? Um, cause often it seems like there's not a lot of work happening outside of perhaps the executive meetings and preparation for the general meeting. So I appreciate that insight. Um, I really liked that there was updates provided about the graduation. I'm already liking that page and congratulating everyone. In fact, I think I ran out of congratulation comments. IG told me I can't comment anymore. But I'll go back to it. Um, I appreciate Dr. Cascone's comments about um, standing alongside our Asian brothers and sisters in solidarity. I think that's important. Just like uh, you know, for BLM folks um, came out in droves, uh, we should support all of our demographics that are, you know, getting hit. Um, and so I appreciate that and I look forward to more work to have been there. Um, I know that there was um, a comment made about uh, the fact that it's election season for PTA. So I happen to be the president of the Council of PTAs and we're um, encouraging folks to step up at the local level. It's a great opportunity. Um, and it may look a little bit different now that it's virtual, so I encourage you to do that. Um, I do want to let everyone know that Washington PT will have a restart meeting at this Thursday at seven PM. So if you have not heard, uh, please be mindful of that and do share with others as well. Um, and there's been great progress happening with the pre-K expansion. I don't know if there's going to be an opportunity to talk about that from the board. Uh, but I do want to let everyone know that the Council of PT is working in partnership with the superintendent. Um, and we've made great progress so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Spitz, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I actually just wanted to know if there's a plan um, to.
Can you state your name and address?
So sorry. Yes, it's five Waddington Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, I actually am not sure if this is a part of the agenda. I was trying to listen and I, I think I fall in a gray area where right now my son is going to be going into first grade at St. Cloud in September. We pulled him out of West Orange this year for kindergarten because we knew that he wanted to be, and we wanted him to be fully in person. So he is in his school. He's currently in all day, every day, five days a week. Um, we want to know what the plan is for September. If you have a plan, if there's something, you know, there's talks about it. Um, we're seriously considering moving because of the way that this year has been handled. So we were hoping that we could get some sort of answer and see if it's worth staying in this town.
Thank you. And Carol Anne, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Hi there, Carol Anne Holland. I hope it's okay if I ask about something on the superintendent's report.
Can you state your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-one Lawrence Avenue. Uh, I'm really excited to hear about the summer. Um, expanded summer um, classes for children who may have not done as well in virtual school. I'm wondering when we might, is that a definite? When might we find out more about it and who should I reach out to? Summer school could mean rearranging vacation, et cetera. So I just wanted to know when we might get more information and who I could get it from. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Trick scale, Ms. Trick Scales, we, that is everyone. So you can close public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, and thank you to all of the members of the public and um, we always appreciate you being there and asking questions and going to ask Dr. Cascone if he would um, address some of these as they are administrative.
Sure. Thank you, President Trick Scales. Um, so ju- just to kind of speak first to Mrs. Wine Shank's questions. Right. So as far as the, um, you know, I just, after Mrs. Wine Shank asked the question about recess, you know, we'll be discussing that with the principals. I think that's um, you know, that's certainly something that we can um, we can work on. I think it's healthy for the kids and you know, to give them a little opportunity to be interactive and get some exercise while they're at school. Um, you know, so the, the six feet, uh, the, the entire class quarantine versus the six feet. I think if, if you, if you had a class where where you, you know, you, you knew that the students had, had definitively been in situ, in their seat. Um, and there was no intermingling of students, then I would, that, that's how the, that's how the Department of Health guidelines work, which is that, you know, you would have, you know, you would take those students who were closest, who were six feet from that particular student. Um, any decisions that we make about closing classes, closing schools are not, are, are certainly not made. Um, you know, unilaterally by um, educational professionals, but are done in collaboration with the local Department of Health and/or the district physician. But that's my understanding of it, Mrs. Wine Shank, is that uh, provided there's been no intermingling of students, if students were in their seat and considering that a close contact is defined as within six feet for fifteen minutes or more, that would, I would imagine that that would be how the rule would apply, would be applied. Um, Miss, to Mrs. Spitz, um, you know, I know a lot of folks have reached out and said, you know, what's the plan for September? Um, you know, the plan for September, um, and I can tell you that there, you know, and, and obviously I, I meet with the um, regularly with the Essex County um, superintendents and I, and I can tell you there isn't a single superintendent in the, in the county anyway that is focused on next year right now. In other words, where there's a definitive plan in place. Um, I think it's safe to say, based upon the governor's decree, um, if you will. And um, the sense that we need to figure out a way to get it done and not just in West Orange, but um, across the state and country because um, you know, West Orange is, you know, obviously not the only school district that's only been in hybrid. Um, you know, there are many school districts that have only been able to be in um, the extent to which we have. And so I think there's a, a sense that we have to figure it out. That's not going to make it easy. Um, because while we, we believe that that's what we need to do, you know, it doesn't change that there are very real challenges and, and I'll name a couple of, just, you know, off the top of my head. So for example, um, one of, and I, and I, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, um, but I do think it's important for, for parents to understand some of these challenges. So when we started this thing, there were a lot of, there were a lot of things that, a lot of health and safety protocol, which were presented to us as non-negotiable. That since, you know, um, have, have been definitively stated as non-negotiable and others which um, have not, but um, which some have interpreted as negotiable and, and, and others not, which is, you know, place superintendent's you know, in, 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 in boards in a tough situation. Um, but one of them, for example, is the sanitization of buses. This was one of the things that we had uh, been told, you know, you need to do this. You need to sanitize buses in between runs, you know, when a new set of students go on. Makes sense. Um, and we realized fairly early on that um, we, if we were to do that, it takes about approximately fifteen minutes to spray a bus down with the electrostatic spray or then to give it time to dry. Well, presently, if we go back to our brick and mortar schedule of the, the, the high school at around seven thirty, the middle schools at around eight, and then the elementary schools at eight forty-five, and the fact that we run triple routes. So the same bus in most cases will run the high school route and the middle school route and the high school route. And in brick and mortar, without sanitizing buses in between, that's a, a pretty tight schedule um, anyway, in terms of making, making sure that we get from door to door and school to school. When you add fifteen minutes in between runs, it actually makes it impossible for us to sanitize the buses in between runs and actually run our traditional brick and mortar schedule. Um, this was the reason why we changed our high school schedule uh, to nine thirty because we, by flip-flopping them going middle school, then elementary school, then high school, we were actually able to realize that. Um, so you know, if we go back to our traditional schedules next year, are the guidelines going to change? Are we going to be told, well, you know, you, you don't have to do that anymore? Um, but, but I think that's a, you know, that, that's a good example. Um, are the, are the social distance guidelines going to be further loosened? Or are they going to stay the? Or are they going to stay the same? Well, if they stay the same, then we have to reconcile ourselves to the fact that we're going to bring more kids in, and they're not going to be three feet apart. So these are some of the kind of the questions that remain. We've, you know, so folks are asking us, do we have a plan for September? And the answer is, is we would love to actually get additional guidance from our overseeing authorities before we go down any rabbit hole of planning. But generally speaking, the plan is that we're in, in particularly on the elementary level, that we're in every day, all day. That is the overall plan. But in terms of, we, we still are in the thick of things this year, and, you know, we'll, you know, provide specificity on that as soon as possible when we, you know, when we, when we, we have a definitive idea of that. But that is the overall idea and the overall goal. You know, in terms of the summer classes, you know, what I, what I can tell you, Mrs. Holland, is that the, the dates for the middle school and the high school program, those are actually, the dates for that program are on the agenda for tonight. And in the next several weeks, you know, we will be communicating the other ones. I think it's safe to say that these programs will be front-loaded on the front side of the summer. So typically, you know, programs will run, you know, four to five weeks. The, the enrichment programs, the, the extracurricular, the, the elective curricular programming can be, you know, four sessions, they're not necessarily going to be, you know, full five-week programs. But I think it's safe to say that we're going to try and front-load these programs primarily in the month of July. So if you were planning a vacation and wanted to work around potentially summer program, I would say that a safe bet would be the second through the fourth weeks of August. And of course, if you're familiar with our school calendar for next year, you'll know that we actually, our school year starts a bit later. So whereas the fourth week in August, you know, in a, in a year where we start earlier, it might be like, wow, you know, you're cutting it close before the beginning of the school year, or school year starts a bit later next year because of the, the way that the Labor Day lays out, and then the Jewish holidays immediately following. But those dates will be announced in the upcoming weeks. And I think the, the best folks to communicate with specifically for the high school and the middle school program would be those guidance offices or, or building principals. And the elementary programs will be on the, for the May 10th agenda. And I believe I've covered all the questions, Mr. Trick Scales, to the best of my ability.
Dr. Kascun, do you want to just talk a little bit about the pre-K expansion, since Ms. Roro brought that up?
Sure, 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 I'd be happy to do that. So thank you for that, Mr. Trick Scales, and thank you to Ms. Roro, you know, not only for the question, but also some of the work that she's doing with members of the community of sort of, you know, formed a really, you know, what you might call an advocacy group, but really they've been a helpful partner to the school district. You know, we were under the, through this partnership and some of the information that we've shared and some of the contacts that they've provided, we've learned that the district will have another bite at the apple, so to speak, you know, for this preschool expansion money. There was an initial grant window early in the year, which, about which we found out somewhat late, and we're not, didn't really have the runway to get that grant done. But there is going to be a second grant window open, I believe, I want to say June, July 1, latest. And presently, we're in the process of having our grant-writing partner do some review of those parameters. Ms. Roro and her group have been doing some canvassing in the community to understand what private providers are there and which of those private providers' programs are aligned with the programmatic requirements under the grant. It's very likely that in this, in this, and West Orange is eligible. So the idea is that these programs would start around October 1st. We would foresee in this first year that a good portion of the grant would be devoted to funding of private providers. So in essence, we would be funding tuition for students in private centers. But from what I understand and some of my contacts and networking, the reviewers of the grant like to see a mixed methodology whereby we are, you're using private providers, but you also offer some classes in district. Now, we don't have a lot of space, but that's not to say that we couldn't potentially establish maybe two or three sections, space permitting in district, to make ourselves more competitive for this grant. But suffice to say, there's going to be a lot, a lot of fact-finding and a lot of preparation going on in the next several weeks. And again, we appreciate Ms. Roro and her, her, her group for their partnership. But we're very excited that we will have a, with the release of this, this additional money, that we will have another opportunity to, to go after it, and we intend to.
Great, thank you. And yes, the board would like to thank Ms. Roro for all that she's done and the group that she's working with to help make this happen. Really appreciate that, and I know there are a lot of pre-K parents out there who are going, yes, yes. Okay, um, let's see, we're up to the second reading on the adoption of the following board policies, and that would be attachment two. And so I would ask for a motion from the board to approve the policies on attachment two.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was that?
That was me.
Oh, Ms. Tony Cliff, thank you very much. Okay, any discussion? All right, there being none, Ms. Flowers, please do the honors.
Okay, Mrs. Reta? Yes. Mrs. Merklinger?
Yeah.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes. President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're up to reports, discussions, and recommendations, and I'm looking at personnel. Items one through three, attachments three through five, is there a motion to approve?
A motion?
Was that Ms. Reta? Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Any discussion on personnel? There being none, oh, is there?
I had a quick question about the, if I could get a little more color on the ELL tutoring and academic support in item five.
Sure, thank you for that question, Ms. Tony Cliff. So this is, you know, this, this is a virtual program. It's similar to some of the programs that we've seen approved in, in prior agendas that, you know, have been operating on the middle school. It's essentially a, an after-school, a virtual after-school support program. There's a staffing base at each of the middle schools, Edison, Roosevelt, and Liberty, and it's really focused specifically on our middle school English language learners, ESL students, and really to just provide them additional support, you know, between now and the end of the school year to help them, you know, see, see the, the year through to fruition to the best of, of their ability and help close any gaps they might have.
Okay, thank you. How many students does this cover?
That's a good question. Yeah, let me, let me, um, Ms. Mendez, are you on the call? I don't know if you have a better handle on our total ESL numbers in the middle schools.
Hang on one second, let's see. Yes, she is.
Ms. Mendez?
I can look that up for you, Dr. Kascun, and give you an answer shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I want to say, I'm going to throw, I'm going to say approximately 60. Well, let's see how, let's see how accurate I am when Ms. Mendez comes in with the numbers. Ms. Ms. Flowers enjoys my, my estimates. That was the-
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to have to look that up. So if you want to move on, and I'll, I'll tap back in as soon as I receive that number.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mendez. Any other discussion items? Dr. Kascun?
I, I actually now, I'm just referring back to the, the memo which Mr. Plata had shared with me. There are 50 middle school English language learners. And presently, yep, 50 is what I have. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just, just one other question. On item number four, the, the co-advisors for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, do you have available just a, a brief description of what that program offers? I meant to look that up, so apologies, that's on me. I haven't looked it up beforehand and was just wondering if you could, if anyone here had any information on that.
Number four.
My, my understanding of, of, you know, and I have a better understanding of it when we're brick and mortar than when we're virtual. But I know that, that the, this is a club that, that participates in, in various competitions, you know, against, against other schools. And I, my understanding is that they continue to do that virtually. You know, but it's, it's sort of akin to the, I don't know if you're, if you're familiar with DECA. What is the old DECA? Which is basically, you know, career and technical education kind of competitions and organizations. And it's, you know, having this club is, is basically a requirement of the Perkins Grant. And that's, that's about all I have on it, Mr. Rothstein, but I could certainly check in with Ms. Mallon. I know she could give a-
Dr. C, I actually, it's the Family Consumer, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America.
Right.
And they have been doing virtual competitions throughout the year. They typically go in person, and it works on public speaking, and it's all in the different categories related to cooking, or sewing, or any of those sorts of things. So it's a great program for our students.
See there, Ms. Cohen, teamwork makes the dream work. You know, I kind of gave it a sketch, and you put in the nice color. Thank you for that.
Very helpful, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion before we take a vote? There being none, Ms. Flowers, please.
Okay, Mrs. Reta? Yes. Mrs. Merklinger?
Yeah.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And looking at the curriculum and instruction, items one through six, and there is attachment six that accompanies this section. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Ms. Reta. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Any discussion?
On item number three, I'd like to postpone voting on it. There's some, just some clarification that's needed on the process that was used to determine this. So I would just like to hold off for now before moving forward with it. I had asked some questions, and I'm just waiting for some clarification. So I don't feel comfortable with voting on it just yet.
What is that item?
Let's see, recommending approval of Dr. Calthani for the professional development for the Amistad training. Item number three. On page eight, bottom of page eight.
Yes, I see it now. I see it now, and which-
I just had some- I'm sorry?
Would you repeat that, please?
Oh, I just had some questions on, I had some, I needed some clarification on the process that was used to vet that out. Certainly, understand, appreciate, and see the need for the Amistad training, and that's, that's not the question, it's just the process of how we go about selecting, selection for it. So I just wanted to get a better understanding of that, of the process before voting on it. But if that's not possible, then I understand.
Okay, well, if this is a discussion item, and you have a question for Dr. Kascun, this would be the time to do it.
Right, I, I posed the question, but I'm just waiting, like I said, I'm just waiting for clarification. So once I get that back, then I would feel more comfortable, but, um-
Yeah, I, I actually, if you allow, Ms. Trick Scales, you know, this, this was a recommendation that, that, that came up to me, you know, and came to me from the, our Diversity Equity and Access Subcommittee, you know, and came really with the recommendation from the, the K-12 Social Studies Supervisor, Michael Figurito. As such, Ms. Mendez, do you have any, are you able to share any insights as to the process that Mr. Figurito utilized in identifying presenters?
I, I think that the committee looked at various presenters across our state and across different organizations to see which presenters really were able to provide professional learning to our staff that closely aligned to our goals. Some of those presenters include those who are members of our community, who are partnership, in partnership with the local universities that we are in partnership with, and Dr. Calthani is one of them. And so as the DIAT committee really vetted the different opportunities that are offered by the presenters, again, in line with our, our professional development goals, they service the district. Dr. Calthani has already provided professional development on April 12th to a group of our teachers, which went extremely well when we're thinking about Amistad. Then as a next step, to continue to consider how we're implementing the curriculum, how we're implementing the curriculum with all of the resources and the training that's necessary. In prior years, when we've sent teachers out to Amistad training, only a few were able to go, and then they came back, the expense was greater than the reward. Here, we have the opportunity for Dr. Calthani to continue with the professional development to train a breadth of our teachers who are actually in the classroom teaching the social studies, so that we can closely wrap ourselves around the professional development. So we've already had some on the 12th, and we're continuing that work throughout the rest of the year because we're cycling through different groups. So for example, we might have had a social studies group of teachers that went through the training for certain grades, and now as we move on, it will be a different group of teachers and/or different grade levels. So this is a continuation of the work.
Um, Ms. Mendez, when you mentioned partnership in universities, are you, is that to say that Dr. Calthani is, is participating in basically through, in, through his capacity with Essex County Community College?
I would have to verify if it's within his capacity, or if he's, you know, how he's participating, but our relationship with him is through Essex and through his work at Essex and through that body of work, then we're able to lean into our diversity, equity, and access goals, specifically around history and, in this case, around Amistad, which has been a priority of ours for, for some time, as Mr. Figurito has assisted the training that was offered, you know, at the library and with the NAACP and, and all of the other organizations in which we're involved.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Any other discussion items? I see that we have a, a grant, Confucius Classroom Grant Award.
Hi.
Dr. Kascun, can you tell us a little, tell the public a little bit about that?
I can tell you a little bit. And tell you, no, so, and, and I may, I may throw a ball again to Ms. Mendez, but let me take a shot at it. So the, the Confucius Grant, my understanding is a grant that, that we receive as, as a district that offers Chinese in the subs, in the sub-high school level. It's a grant that's used to fund materials, and it's also a grant, a partnership through which we engage in cultural exchange, both with students coming here. And then I believe every other year, we send staff, and I don't, do we send students, Ms. Mendez, to China? I don't believe so.
We send staff, every other year. So one year they come to us, the staff comes, they intern with some of our staff, and then another year we go. They also have provided grant funding for our exploratory grade six. exploratory grade six, um, Mandarin class, um, at Edison, um, some resources. Uh, it's a very nice partnership that we have. Uh, again, opportunities for our teachers to experience, participating in the, um, instruction in China. And when they, uh, their teachers come here, they stay with our families and/or our teachers, right? And they are able to experience that. Also, there are many activities, cultural activities, um, that, uh, the students participate in, um, and communications are made across, um, the United States and, right, West Orange and the schools in China.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mendez.
I was just gonna ask a question. I thought we did, um, send students. I know a number of years ago, probably back in 2012, I think there was a group of West Orange High School students that did go to China. Do we know why that was stopped and if that is a possibility to continue at some point?
I do believe they went and I think that is a possibility to continue. I, I do believe that as we were approaching a time with visas, there were some things that were being worked out and then we got into COVID. And so I just think right now, uh, all things are on pause until, until the world kind of sorts itself out.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Yes, I'm afraid so. Item five, under Curriculum and Instruction, the, um, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about when we're going to be submitting, um, for this grant. I think is that just, that's when we get the money? Or is there another submission that we have to do? It says pending submission? And then is there a chance that we wouldn't get it? And what would happen to this program then?
Yep, so, um, Mr. Mendez could probably, could share with you a little more clarity on the timelines. Uh, we are in the, uh, the latter stages of putting together this application. Um, the likelihood of us not getting it, um, is extremely low. Um, you know, we've reviewed the allowable expenses under the grant and we're, and we are, um, you know, unlike a, you know, kind of a qualification grant, this is sort of like, you know, I kinda call plug and play, you know, as long as you're operating within the, uh, the fiscal parameters and the allowable expenses, it's sort of fait accompli. And, um, in terms of when that will be awarded, uh, Mr. Mendez, I know you were just working on this today with, um, uh, with your team. Um, i- did you get any insights today in your conversations about what those, those deadlines are and timelines are?
Uh, we're in the process of putting together the timelines. Um, Ms., um, O'Conado has attended the training just this past week, uh, and so then they're working with us. We are looking to have the grant or a draft of the grant completed by May. Um, right now what we're doing is working through, um, the specific, uh, programs that we are going to implement that would address closing learning gaps, which is what the grant serves, uh, to fund. A part of that application process was ensuring that our student data was in, in terms of assessment. We've completed that part, uh, to say, these are the assessments we've implemented in district and the absence of state assessments. Um, and therefore they're going to use that data to, um, see, you know, the need. Uh, would we not be accepted as the part of grant? I guess there's always a possibility, but, uh, I think what they're looking for now is for us to present a justification, right? Uh, here is our summer school program. It will, uh, provide credit recovery to our students and therefore address these learning gaps that we've presented in our data. These is, this is the way that we're going to accomplish that. Here is our middle school program. Some of the learning gaps might have contributed to retention. In order to avoid retention in our middle school students, these are the programs we're going to come, um, put in place in order to address that. Social and emotional learning across the grades, right? Making sure we couple that with social and emotional learning at the elementary level. When we're thinking about reading and writing, here are the gaps that we've discovered based on our data. Therefore, these are the programs we'd like to implement. We're submitting the budget and then they would, uh, approve, um, the grant based on our ability to justify, uh, that our programs are closely aligned to the needs of the students.
So, can I ask follow-up questions? To that?
Of course.
Um, so just for, for our sake, could you, would you be able to provide us with a timeline for this? So you mentioned a kind, you know, kind of planning for, you know, we're planning to plan. Um, so could we get specific timelines and what we can expect and when? Um, so that's one piece. But then the other thing is you mentioned about assessments and identifying the gaps. How are we doing that? Since I, from what I understand, we haven't done any testing or we, and how are we evaluating social emotional gaps?
Sure, so the gaps are academic.
Mrs. Mendez. Knowing that you'll be presenting in a comprehensive presentation on this on May 10th, I, I would ask you to just take a, just kind of a, a 30,000 foot on this, um, cause I know that you're preparing to be able to present. I know you could speak at length on it, um, as you've been really knee-deep in this data that we've been submitting to the state, but knowing that, you know, in the board may not be aware that we were planning on bringing forward a pretty comprehensive assessment presentation, um, on this topic on the 10th, but I don't know if you want to just take a, a quick run at it, uh, Mr. Mendez?
Sure. So in the absence of state assessment data, of course, uh, as part of our curriculum, we are implementing assessments, uh, throughout each content area. So on the 10th, we will be able to share, um, these are the types of assessments that we're administering in each content area and across the grade levels. These are the types of common assessments that we may be implementing. These are what the data are telling us and therefore this is how we're addressing, uh, learning gaps where they exist. Um, uh, so on the 10th, we will go through, um, the types of data that we're looking at. We will go through the professional development that has taken place over the past, uh, few months, uh, that really is unpacking that data and applying specific interventions for students and what our plan is, uh, continuing into the 21, 22 school year for continuing to address any learning gaps and/or acceleration that we need to put in place because we're looking at students who are, um, could be behind, could be, uh, on target and then students who are advanced.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. Any other comments before we take a vote?
No, I would just say I look forward to the May 10th, um, explanation to go further into detail. So I'll hold off all my questions on those programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one more question. Sorry, I just wanted to, on the, on item six, um, regarding the summer school expansion at the high school, um, just wondering, I know it looks like part of this is funded by the grant and then there's about 63,000 plus that is, um, the balance. Where is that coming from?
Um, that is money that was, um, thank you for that question, Mr. Tunnycliff. That, that is money that's, um, that's budgeted, that is within the, um, the 2021 budget, budgeted for, uh, the summer school and the Step Up Program.
So that would have been what we would have spent if we didn't have to add additional?
Correct.
Students to that. Okay, great, thank you.
And, and just, and you know, and I, and I think, kind of also the, the spear of the question initially, and I understand, is, right, so we don't get the ESER II grant? Then what happens?
Right.
Well, I, I think the, um, I think the reality of it is, is we sort of need to move this forward and get the board's approval and, and start moving some of these balls forward. But what's gonna happen is, is the, the, the planning path and the ESER II path are gonna, are gonna gradually converge together and, and, and ideally they converge to a point where, um, where, uh, you know, we, we haven't gone too, we haven't gone too far. Worst case scenario, we haven't gone too far afield in our planning, um, where we've offered something which we can't fund. So we're gonna be keeping an eye on those two paths and worst case scenario, we only offer what we can fund out of the local budget.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
Now, because, um, because the budget is not a, not a, yet a done deal.
Right.
You know, um, could be ground some, for some further conversation because presently we only have earmarked in the 2021 budget out of local funds, essentially what we've typically had in the past, which is an allocation for ESY and allocation for high school summer school.
Right.
So that might be something we, you know, we may want, that the administration may want to consider, um, and move forward between now and May 3rd, uh, but it's not gonna be easy.
Yeah.
It could be.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, do we have any other items for, uh, discussion before we take a vote? Alrighty, we're ready. Um, Mrs. Flowers, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Retta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger? Mrs. Merklinger, are you there?
I should get.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's okay.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff? President Trick?
Yes.
Yes. And President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. All right, uh, C, Finance. A and B, and this is Attachments Seven Through Ten. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President. Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Uh, discussion? On any of these items?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the, what did we get? Uh, donation, the donor? Uh, for the $80 from Black Blood Giving Fund?
Yes. Thank you to those donors. Thank you, Ms. Retta. Any other discussion? There being none, um, Mrs. Flowers, please.
Mrs. Retta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. And we are now up to, um, petitions and hearings of citizens. And here is where you may, uh, ask a question, make a comment. It does not have to be an agenda item. And again, I would just like to ask everyone, um, if the comment has been made, please be considerate so that we can hear from a number of people on a number of topics. And Ms. Cohen, thank you very much. And we have a three-minute limit?
Yes, and it is like, I'd like the last timer. I don't know why it's displaying two minutes and 38 seconds, but it is three minutes, I promise. And just a reminder, um, if you're on the phone, you can press star nine, um, to, uh, raise your hand. And please make sure you state your full name and address for the record when it is your turn. Um, it's in as Elizabeth Redwine. You should be able to unmute yourself, um, state your name, full address, and then you can begin your comment.
Hi, it's Elizabeth Redwine from 10 Cobain Terrace. And I have three things to say, so I'm gonna try to be really quick. Um, the first thing is just that I hope we retain the library specialist at Hazel. The second thing, which I hadn't planned to say, but I was pretty disturbed by Ms. Merklinger's questioning of the vetting of Dr. Calphani, who is a very experienced professor and has a doctorate. It was just kind of surprising. I've never heard anyone's vetting question like that before. So thank you so much for voting on it, everyone. And, um, I think I understood that he is still going to have that position. Um, but the main thing that I wanted to talk about today is an idea I've been talking about with some neighbors and friends. Um, I feel that the West Orange Public Schools are the jewel of West Orange and I would love to, um, get a magnet going that just says like, "We heart West Orange Public Schools." And, um, Ms. Velazquez, a friend of mine, is working on a design. We would love to kind of work on this over the summer. And then anyone who wants to help out, I can share my email. And, um, I think it would show perspective, people moving into the town that we're a town that values our schools. I think it would help with unity after a really difficult year. Um, and I had like 10 other reasons, but I can't think of them right now. Coming together after the pandemic, um, I've just been texting with friends. Um, and I also think like we have, of course, we would still have the honors magnets and band magnets and soccer magnets and everything, but I think it would be really nice to have a magnet that celebrated the whole school community, not just the individual schools. And, oh, the other thing is, we were thinking we'd sell them. I just remember when we bought the Gregory magnets, they were like $5. So I, we were thinking we'd sell them for about $5 at school events and then all the money would go to us, maybe like the principal's scholarship fund, um, one of the scholarship funds. So I don't know, I was just thinking that might be a fun and interesting way to celebrate the schools. And, you know, you could, you wouldn't even have to have your kids go to the schools to, to have the magnet. I hope my parents in New Hampshire have the magnet, you know what I mean? Um, I just think it would be kind of a, a fun, like unifying project. So you, anyone can email me. I'll share my email, um, with the board if anyone wants to help out. Um, but yeah, Ms. Velazquez is a wonderful artist. You don't want me doing the art. She's working on the art for it and we would hopefully have it at the farmer's markets and, you know, PTAs could help out if they wanted to. Thanks so much. It was just an idea.
Good idea. Great. Thank you, Ms. Redwine. Uh, Beth Thomas, you should be able to unmute yourself. And I will reset the timer.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Beth Thomas, um, P.O. Box 1460 Springfield, New Jersey. Uh, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am the current president of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians and I'm here tonight to make the same request past president Christina Cucci made in 2019. Please reconsider your decision to eliminate school library media specialist positions. Your district website states that the library media program, quote, "seeks to inspire students to become lifelong learners who develop a love for reading and become skilled in multiple literacies," end quote. The commitment of your district's school library media specialists is abundantly evident, as demonstrated by their January 2021 presentation to the board. During this unprecedented year in education, West Orange School Library Media Specialists seamlessly pivoted from physical spaces to digital spaces to continue information literacy, instruction, curricular support, and access to digital resources. During this time of remote learning, your school library staff members increased their school community's access to materials by subscribing to ebook and audiobook collections. Your school library media specialists are a key component in supporting Goal Two of West Orange Public School Strategic Plan: Readiness for Student Success. Literacy support is the bedrock of this goal, and although classroom library collections certainly support literacy, they do not have the breadth or depth of a school library collection. Moreover, resources purchased for classroom libraries are available to a much smaller segment of the school population. Robust budgets enable school library media specialists to purchase resources that are current, diverse, support the curricular needs of the entire building, and address a range of learning abilities. The return on investment of a school library cannot be overstated. Your school library media specialists serve all students and all teaching staff in your district. They are among the few educators who teach every student every year that that student is in a building. This consistency enables school library media specialists to foster relationships that make personalized learning truly possible. They are one of your district's best bargains. A school library media specialist is the highly qualified and certified educator of the largest classroom in the school. School libraries and school library media specialists help to bridge the digital divide by providing equitable access to resources and materials and instruction on how to most effectively utilize those resources. In partnership with classroom teachers, school library media specialists develop instruction that leads to authentic learning experiences where students develop critical thinking skills, learn how to evaluate resources, and become information-literate digital citizens. School library media specialists are the certified teachers who instruct students on how to check sources for possible distortion, exaggeration, or misrepresentation, a skillset that recent events in our country have shown to be more crucial than ever. Those of us who work in education have seen the headlines about learning loss and the gaps our students will be facing as we start to return to some semblance of normalcy. It is never a good time to cut school library media specialists, but the current timing could not be worse. West Orange School Library Media Specialists have been working harder than ever this year to support their students' academic and social-emotional needs, and these students will need them just as much, if not more, next year and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Bonnie Palmeroy, you should be able to unmute yourself and, uh, state your full name and address and then you may speak.
Hello, uh, good evening. My name is Bonnie Palmeroy. I am a teacher at Edison Middle School. First, let me begin by saying what a great job that Dr. Casco and the school board have done during very difficult times. They have worked hard. They have worked hard to keep our school community safe, and I am grateful for that. However, this week I was dismayed to hear that one middle school choral position has been cut and two librarian positions have been cut. Since I am the choral teacher at Edison Middle School, I will first address my concerns about the middle school choral position. The secondary choral teachers have been working together more than ever this year, producing a six-to-12 district virtual choral concert in the midst of a pandemic, a shining example of the excellence of our choral program. Even Dr. Kaskon participated in this event. I am concerned that the loss of full-time choral teachers at Roosevelt and Liberty will be a detriment to our choral program and eventually affect the numbers at the high school as well. Singing is the most universal of all instruments. Ella Fitzgerald said, "The only thing better than singing is more singing." I fail to see how downsizing the choral faculty is in the best interest of our students. Community singing is part of our culture and expression of who we are. The two librarian cuts also concern me. How can you possibly replace their knowledge and expertise? I also fail to see how this is in the best interest of our students. Who will they go to now for resources and help with a paper or project? When I was a child, my favorite place was the library, a place of endless books, adventures, and knowledge. I would hope that our students would continue to have such a place with a trained expert running it. Let me conclude by saying that I do understand and consider what financial pressures face Dr. Kaskon and the school board. But let us consider the future of these decisions. Will we have a diminished choral program? Will students no longer have experts in the library to help them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. Patty Richardson, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your full name and your address, and then you may begin your comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Richardson, and I'm an eighth-grade teacher at Liberty Middle School, serving this community for over 20 years. I felt compelled to speak tonight to address the possibility of eliminating library media specialist positions within the district. To put it bluntly, that would be catastrophic. As an ELA teacher, I do not know where I would be without the help, support, and collaboration of our library media specialist, Mrs. Lisa Touzot. She, along with all the other library media specialists within the district, have been an absolute blessing and lifeline for the faculty and staff and children of the building they serve. They are the heart of each building, nurturing lifelong learning while also creating a special place in the hearts of our children and staff. One could make the assumption that when the district went remote last spring, there was not much for the library media specialists to do. I'm here to tell you unequivocally, that is the furthest thing from the truth. Our library media specialists went into overdrive updating resources to better assist not only the teachers and staff, but our students as well. Access to online books grew overnight, and our library media specialists were in our virtual classrooms in a heartbeat, showing both teachers and students how to access them. I cannot begin to tell you how many times Mrs. Touzot has been in my classroom, from LMC orientations to online databases, creating virtual spine poetry Google slides, to creating a month-long interactive Black History Month daily calendar, to having students create their own reading equation, celebrating their creativity and imagination, the list goes on. The library media specialists have been the curators of books and materials for teachers and staff to help us navigate all that is going on in our world today, either for our own social and emotional well-being to providing talking points with our students. When we felt as though we did not have our words, our library media specialists help us, helped us define them, why would we want to eliminate that? After viewing the West Orange High School newsletter, put together by Ms. Julia Matts and Ms. Beverly Tyndall, Dr. Kaskon immediately recognized something truly special and wanted the entire community to see the value of all that the library media centers had to offer at the January 7th Board of Ed meeting. Dr. Kaskon described the library media specialists to be the hub of the school with their rich and amazing resources, acting as collaboration specialists, demonstrating technological applications and proficiencies while leading the charge of diversity. Each of the board members recognized and commended, commented on how informative and thorough the presentation was, in particular, Ms. Merklinger. Ms. Huerta reminisced at how memorable the displays at Edison were when she was there as a student. Vice President Tunncliff said how the presentation made her want to sit in a library and read while also commending the library media specialist's ability to tailor content to classes, especially on fake news and media bias. Mr. Rothstein loved the organization and wanted to add another C to the presentation list, which was celebrated. He hoped that all the library media specialists felt celebrated. President Trick Scales expressed how amazing the presentation was, and it was her hope that all the, all that was presented would remain when we're all back together, which leads me to this thought. How can any of the library media specialists feel celebrated and their programs remain safe if we eliminate their positions? There's no celebration in that, and the pulse of our school would be gone. In the words of Judy Bloom, "Librarians save lives by handing the right book at the right time to the kid in need." Our library media specialists have saved our lives time and time again. Now it is time to do the same for them and save their lives. Please keep the heart of our buildings intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Lisa Touzot, you should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address, and you may speak.
Good evening, Lisa Touzot, 15 Carter Road, plus Liberty Middle School Library, Library Media Specialist. I would like to thank Patty Richardson, who so eloquently took the words right out of my mouth when saying that when we had the presentation on the 17th, it was to show the public and the board the great things the library was doing. The glowing comments from the board stayed with us till we got the notice that our department was being cut. What we don't understand is how a department that is the hub of the school and leading the charge for diversity with our collection that is one of the most diverse in the state of New Jersey, how could we allow this to happen? We have shown that we, as a department, are engaged and our students, with our students, and collaborate across the curriculum. Our spaces are one of access and equity. We meet and exceed district goals and state standards time and time again. Our district has made investments in our spaces, our resources, and our expert personnel. Access and equity cannot happen with any realignment, modification, or reductions to our program. It will negatively impact every single student in this district. Students will be marginalized and suffer, suffer inequality and literacy poverty. This is not the first time we have been before this board. We have been targeted before, and this feels like punishment. For what? Loving our jobs? For serving every single student in West Orange with diverse literature and 21st century skills? Our accomplishment help all students and staff of West Orange and should be celebrated. Any thoughts of cuts to our department must be put to rest for once and for all. When touching libraries, you move closer to not being able to serve all our students, their families, with the wealth of resources, and as Mr. Rothstein said the night of the presentation, can be found at the door of the Library of Opportunity where learning happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Touzot. The next person is listed as Susan. You should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and then you may begin your comment. You need to unmute. You should be able to. Alright, I'm going to, uh, don't touch anything, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist, you may be on an older version of Zoom, so just hang on one second. Alright, now, now you should be able to unmute, hopefully. Alright, I'm going to re-put you down as an attendee, and we'll move on, and you can where'd you go? Sorry, this is, this is where my not expertise is failing me.
You do, Ms. Cohen, you're doing fun.
Alright, I put her back as an attendee, you're welcome to get back in line, and we will try again in a moment. Sandy Bocheese, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Sandy Bocheese, 15 Burn Road, West Orange. I am also the library media specialist at Edison, and I've been there for 16 years. We've lived in West Orange for 38 years. Our son and daughter are proud products of the West Orange school system. In all those years, we've seen school administrations come and go, but have always believed in the district's commitment to providing the richest, most comprehensive education for every student. But now, given the recent cuts to the library program, I no longer believe that to be true. I tried to understand, why would the district cut a literacy program, knowing how integral literacy is to student achievement, considering the impact that a year of remote learning has had? Does the administration and board not understand the value that each of us brings? Research demonstrates that students in schools, staffed with a librarian, achieve higher scores on standardized tests. That's data, pure and simple. When the district pivoted to remote learning last year, we worked to obtain the SOAR app, push it out to every Chromebooks, so our students would immediately have access to hundreds of free ebooks and audiobooks. We collaborated with the public library to offer online card applications so that each student and their families could get digital library cards, bringing them access to literally thousands and thousands of free ebooks, audiobooks, streaming video. While remote and hybrid, we continue to prepare our students for college and career and provide assistance to our teachers. In school, we support the students' social and emotional needs, as our libraries are sanctuaries for those students. Perhaps the board and administration do not understand the unique role of the librarian. We teach and we run a facility, curating a collection that reflects each individual school. In order for the program to be effective, each building needs to have one librarian who knows their population. We curate age-appropriate collections that have been described as the most diverse in the state. Items are often selected title by title to reflect, reflect the diverse cultures of the students and evolving curriculum. There's no Instacart-type bookshop that sends those books out. The collections are diverse because of the skill of the library media specialist. We've done more for less these past few years. What a shame that you're choosing to add three central office administrators when the budget is in such dire straits that librarians must be eliminated. And what a shame that you're diminishing one of the programs that so richly enhances our students' education. It's disappointing that the district doesn't value all that we bring to our students, our teachers, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boches. Fatu Mabey, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Fatu Mabey, 12 Elliott Place. I am the Hazel Avenue PTA president. Good evening. I'm calling in today to voice my disappointment and frustration to this board about the possibility of Hazel losing its librarian due to budget cuts. I left a voicemail for Dr. Kaskon today and sent him two emails. Several Hazel parents did the same thing. Dr. Kaskon did respond to my email, but I full-heartedly disagree with his response. Dr. Kaskon circulated to all the parents who wrote him today that he does not wish to have any reduction, but it is needed. So please explain to us why you lack funding to retain the librarian from a Title I school that has some of the lowest reading scores in the district, with 55% of student testing as proficient in English, yet you have funding to hire additional six-figure administrative positions? Educators everywhere have identified reading as a pivotal skill for success at all levels. Where does removing the librarian that has been successful at promoting after-class reading and reading comprehension skills to our students fall? This decision will have a negative high cost, high-impact effect on our children. How are we establishing and nurturing a diverse staff? One that reflects our student body when we're getting rid of one of the two black educators Hazel has? I have been in that school for nine years, and I don't think I'm incorrect when I say at least 85% of our students are black or Latino. Where is the representation? Why waste our time filling out equity and inclusion surveys when nothing is being done to keep the good staff we have? When the diverse staff that are hired are the first one out, then it beats the whole purpose. Performance should matter. If the board does not promote diversity, then own it and stop hiding behind backward regulations. Hazel School cannot sacrifice our librarian due to economic consideration. Who determines that the loss of one librarian would not disable any child at Hazel? With all due respect, this way of thinking is incorrect and dangerous. When one child is at Hazel fails, this board fails. And if I sit and shut my mouth, the PTA that I represent fails. Miss Soto has got out of her way to create programs for her students and families to encourage a passion for reading and has worked hard to engage with our students during this prime time. On top of all of that, she has teamed up with Hazel parents to run a three-month Black History program at Hazel on African folk tales and hasn't gotten a penny for it. This is all part of the West, this is not even part of the West Orange curriculum, but it is what our students needed for enrichment. And like a champion educator, she offered it to them. She's teaching our children different ways to learn. She's helping them expand their vocabulary and frankly, also broaden their word knowledge. Library is reading, and reading is fundamental, period. When my daughter and the rest of her Hazel, and the rest of this Hazel children walk into the school and library, it is important for them to see themselves reflected in the staff and teachers in their school. For you to tell us regulations are colorblind and provide no provision for consideration makes you part of the problem. We wanted you, our superintendent, and chose this diverse board because we wanted diversity represented in our school and our town. This decision is not acceptable. We thought you wanted the same thing, and we will continue to challenge this. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mabey. Jenna Bleak, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak at this point. State your name and address, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Jenna Blakie. I'm at 86 Brandywine Drive in Florham Park, and I'm currently the Mount Pleasant Librarian. So the rumor has been that the district is looking to cut two of its 12-member team of library media specialists. So if two people are cut, that means 10 people spread over 11 different schools. So I wanted to get a picture of what it would be like if even just one elementary librarian was cut, because at the elementary level, every homeroom has a 40-minute library class, with kindergarten being reduced to 30 minutes because of cuts made to the itinerant position in 2019. So with six librarians spread over seven different schools, there are currently 155 classes to be taught. Hypothetically, we'd have 26 classes per week or more, and this is with no time in between, meaning back-to-back classes. We'd need at least 35 minutes of book check-in and shelving per day, which I based on a 30, on a 300-student count, which includes, on average, 600 or more books circulating per week, and that's a low-ball number. One lunch period, one prep per day. If we kept at least two Makerspace periods per week, which we've been doing pre-pandemic, and factor in at least two travel periods, as I'd expect we'd be traveling between schools at least twice per week, this leaves us with about an hour of time remaining during the week. So my question would be, where is the time to do the following things that we do? Print and distribute overdue notices. With well over $1 million of resources between our schools, we send anywhere from 50 to 100 reminders a week, especially without having a fine policy at the elementary level for overdues. Kids and parents need reminders. Cataloging, adding new books, correcting inaccurate records, modifying records when books are weeded or moved to different shelves. Not keeping this up leads to more system inaccuracy over time. 3D printing. Our district has recently purchased many 3D printers. We've had no recent training and have had to teach ourselves. It takes between 15 to 30 minutes to modify and set up printing for just one project, and one grade level is about 60 or more projects. Prepping and planning for Makerspace. These are the lessons that the kids love and need, where they're so engaged. We have maximum participation and minimal behavior issues. They're some of the best lessons I've conducted with my LLD students. Projects like building with manipulatives, creating circuits, coding lessons, and other STEM coding lessons, and other STEM projects that need lots of prep time. Included with this are breakout box lessons. I have personally prepared a breakout box lesson for one grade level, and it takes hours, resetting all of the locks and the number sequences. Hours to do this. So weeding is another part of library, a huge part. Each book needs to be evaluated to determine if it's outdated. Is it of interest? Does it contain biases towards race, sex, or gender? Has it circulated? Without weeding, we'll never be able to make room for new books. And as stated earlier, we were informed by our regional book company distributors this year that West Orange is one of the most diverse collections in New Jersey because each and every school has a librarian who is carefully researched and budgeted to order these materials. So the question is, how is all of this getting done in only one hour per week? And the answer is, unfortunately, it can't, and our program will suffer, impacting every single teacher and student. I want to thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Bleak. Susan McAbby, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hello, Susan McAbby, 2 Mountain Way. So, you got me?
Yes, you're good.
I also wanted to very quickly talk about the librarians. They are very close to my heart and to my kids' hearts. You really need to look at what they're doing, especially at those grade levels. In elementary school, you know, the kids get to know their librarian. Their librarian gets to know them, and there's a very personal connection there. That's extremely important, especially if you're not getting all the support in your classroom. A lot of times, they'll go to the librarian for the extra support that helps them get through the week. In the middle school, I can't imagine having one middle school librarian for two schools that kids could only get books every other day. It just doesn't work in any way. And I do think that if we have to cut somewhere, we should cut as far away from the kids as possible. So, I mean, I don't know why we need extra administrators. There are probably great reasons, but not at the expense of our librarians. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julie Matts, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Julie Matts, and I am one of the librarians at West Orange High School. If you've read the Harry Potter stories, you're familiar with the Room of Requirement. It appears when someone is in need. They don't have to ask or say a secret password. Our school libraries are just that. Sanctuaries students and faculty can enter whenever they are in need. The American Association of School Librarians puts it this way. The school library is a unique and essential part of a learning community. It is a destination for onsite and virtual personalized learning. The school librarian ensures that the library environment provides all members of the school community access to information and technology. If you were at the January 7th Board meeting, you heard Bev Tindall and I provide evidence for how West Orange School Libraries meet and exceed the AASL standards. You may recall that our presentation was enthusiastically received by the superintendent and the board members. We highlighted then, and it holds true now, that our school libraries are the one place where students and faculty find a physical welcome mat during the school day and a virtual one 24/7 through each library's website. In the poetic words of celebrated author Jason Reynolds, "School libraries are places of refuge, and the school librarian has one job: to serve as a buttress, as an affirmation, and a confirmation for every single student that walks through those doors." We could not agree more. We know all of our students, those conducting research, those working together and joint projects, others who crave the next book in a popular series, and most importantly, those who believe that the library is their personal judgment-free space. Our libraries are sanctuaries for students with special needs and those struggling under special circumstances. Working hand-in-hand with school counselors and special education teachers, school librarians make sure that no matter what, every child in need has the Room of Requirement. Our libraries are also where faculty come to decompress, collaborate with colleagues, get encouragement, and just be. If the proposed cuts go into effect, one librarian will service and manage two middle school libraries, while six librarians will share the responsibility of teaching and managing seven elementary libraries. As a result, the middle school and elementary libraries will be periodically closed, doors locked, lights out. This social-emotional safe haven will be gone until the librarian returns. Where will the students in need go? Where will faculty congregate to renew their spirit? I speak today because I am gravely concerned that those who proposed and those who support these changes have not given thought to their social and emotional effects that will ripple through the district. We started out the school year with SEL training, recognizing that this year, more than any other, comes with a unique set of stressors for students and staff. SEL goals are part of every teacher's professional development plan, and yet we are considering closing school libraries. How ironic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matts. Betsy Stevens, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Betsy Stevens at 10 Beaumont Terrace. I just wanted to speak because I feel strongly that we keep our full-time librarian and library media specialist and our choral instructors in West Orange schools. While our children learn fundamentals in the classroom and our teachers do a phenomenal job of teaching those fundamentals, our library media specialists teach our children how to use those fundamentals to unlock a lifetime of learning. Having a school without a library media specialist is like having a rocket without a launching pad, which is something I think we shouldn't be doing in the wake of this past year as we all turn our attention to learning recovery. I volunteered at my children's elementary school library, and while doing this, I saw firsthand what a huge job a library media specialist has. And I can't imagine anyone being able to accomplish this job on a part-time basis. And just the glimpse that I saw in the few hours a week I was there, I saw our library media specialist at Gregory, Julie Matts, who just spoke, monitor the checking out and returning of books, then re-shelve all of those books. And honestly, with the volume checked out at the elementary school level, I think this alone constitutes a full-time job. I saw her carefully research and budget in order to curate an appropriate collection of books that addressed the school's curriculum and met the social-emotional needs of children as well. I once watched her pull a book for a child who had recently lost a pet. She told the child she thought the book would be just what he needed and hoped it would bring him some comfort. It's not just books that our librarians are in charge of now. I saw Ms. Matts manage media, electronic resources, and other data resources, making sure they would support the school's curricula and stay within the school's guidelines. I saw her develop curriculum and deliver lessons for students at every grade level. And finally, I saw her create a resource-based environment that was conducive to active participatory learning. This meant she acquired the right books for the school and updated that collection every year. She organized all the books and data housed in the library in a way that made these resources accessible to the students and used decorations that were educational as well as eye-catching. In addition to all this, Ms. Matts organized special events, such as bringing authors to speak to children, which definitely further encouraged the love of reading and that she had already fostered among these students. She also taught an after-school class that focused on safety of the internet. In regards to the choral faculty members, because I'm running out of time, I ask that you please do not cut these positions at a time when our students so desperately need an outlet for difficult emotions. They need this now more than ever. I've never volunteered with the choral program, but I've enjoyed the concerts, the music program in West and the music program in West Orange, I feel, is stellar, and it brings joy to so many. During this time, we need more joy, not less. I think I made it in time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. We're going to give Susan another try. If you can unmute yourself, state your full name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth DeWarte. My address is 14 Cowing Place, and I'm a senior at West Orange High School. Personally, I feel like the high school and middle school students have kind of become second-class citizens in our district, and I have a few questions regarding that. So I'd like to know why cohorts have not been combined yet, even though we have such a small number of people who have enlisted in hybrid. And I'd also like to know why almost every other district around has been able to figure out how to get as many kids back as possible, and West Orange still has not been able to do that. And I also want to know what will happen with graduation. Like, will it be in a bunch of different ones like it was last year or in just one? All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Eisen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, it actually worked. There you go. Molly Eisen, I'm an ELA teacher at Edison Middle School. The media center and library media specialists really represent the hub. We saw evidence of the rich and amazing resources that the district offers, evidence of the professional collaboration that is happening in the district, technology applications and proficiencies our libraries are bringing forth. Terrific presentation. I love the organization of the many Cs of the library. We can add "celebrated." It was really great to see what you are offering our staff and students. I applaud you for that. Bravo, bravo. That was just phenomenal. A lot gets put into the work you do, and that is evident. We saw our library media centers are leading the charge for diversity. Outstanding professional practice that was on display tonight. It just makes me want to go and sit in the library and read and check out all of the resources you have for all of our students. I don't know which piece was more fabulous than the other. These are your words, captured following the librarian's spectacular presentation in January. As someone who is not a library media specialist, but who is privileged to witness and benefit from their hard work, I was gratified to hear your incredible statements of praise and admiration for my colleagues. All of it, very much deserved. The pandemic and pivot to e-learning posed a massive challenge to everyone, library media specialists included. During the scramble that has been the past 13 months, the library media specialists have been indispensable resources for teachers and students alike. These educators have worked countless hours to ensure that the school communities have access to online books, resources, and tools to help us do our job and to keep students engaged. Every request we have put forth for more information, resources, for co-teaching lessons with us has been met with an unhesitating yes. Every single teacher and student has benefited from their LMC and the fantastic individuals in those settings. So imagine my shock and horror when word came around that the budget proposal contains cuts to librarians' jobs. My first thought was, is this some kind of joke? It had to be. After all, you would just heap lavish and much-deserved praise on our librarians only three months ago, but now they are disposable? In a district that focuses on learning loss, we're going to reduce one of our strongest resources? How is this even being considered? In a year when West Orange is receiving additional aid money, where is the justification for eliminating library media specialist positions? Especially administrators, noneducators, who will not be directly interacting with students on a regular basis? It makes no sense. Can you please consider the message you are sending to your students and your faculty, to the community, when you suddenly discount librarians as dispensable? It is not a message that is a positive one, but rather a founding one that is counterintuitive and counterproductive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisen. Ms. Franowitsch, I apologize. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you. My name is Mira Franowitsch. I am the library media specialist at Rosado. A library isn't just a collection of books, nor the librarian, a collector of them. It's a safe space and education center. Now more than ever, the ability to negotiate through information overload is imperative in an information-rich society. Look at the last four, eight years. We failed as a society because we couldn't distinguish fact from fiction. It's irrefutable that we're in the middle of the information age, and the librarian is at the center of helping students learn how to weed through this information. It's a core precept of library education. Unfortunately, education appears to be moving in a business direction. We rely on the mined data, not the careful consideration of our hired professionals. We care about arbitrary rankings based on said data rather than look at true individual growth, which encompasses so much more. So let's start this with data. Let's look at the hard-driven facts. Each quote I'm about to give is from a scholarly article, peer-reviewed journal. Each quote is from 2019 to 2021. What does the data say about school library media specialists? Well, according to qualitative and quantitative methods in libraries, March 2020, we can say that the school library is inseparable from the school and its mission. It follows the development of education and assists the process by using new technologies, promoting language and intellectual competencies, and launching innovative projects. Since education is constantly changing in terms of goals, content, and evaluation, the main task of educators is to prepare students to be able to choose information, approach it critically, and evaluate it, aka information literacy. The United Kingdom Literacy Association, March 2019, says that qualified librarians have unique skill sets with dual-qualified teacher librarians, strongly positioned to support student learning in the library. These knowledge and skill strengths should not be taken for granted. Education departments should not inadvertently encourage the substitution of qualified staff with unqualified staff through budgetary constraints and lack of recognition of the contribution of qualified librarians. And of course, we have to recognize the ALA from June 2020, which says, "School librarians fulfill five important roles: instructional partner, teacher, leader, information specialist, and program administrator." These five roles maintain school librarian visibility while reminding our community that we serve all students, including the most vulnerable. Let's discuss that. Due to COVID, more and more of our community members have found themselves in positions of needing additional resources and assistance. The library is the great equalizer, keeping our students from being reminded of the class divide. Additionally, this decision makes me question my choice to live and raise my kids in this district. I'm a teacher, a community member, and a parent of a future Gregory Eagle. I don't know what will motivate my child to love school or want to learn. She should be academically driven, but she may be driven by music, art, PE, or dare I say, the library. I have a problem with a district that doesn't see my child as a whole person with creative needs that are as great as her academic and social needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Finkst, you should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address, and you may speak.
Hi, good evening. It's Carrie Finkst. I live at 13 Helen Avenue. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of my coworker, John Hellyer, vocal music teacher at West Orange High School. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us this evening because he is doing technical rehearsals for a spring musical that is happening this coming weekend. So I agreed to read his statement for him. It says, "I'm concerned about the proposed elimination of one of the 7th and 8th-grade chorus teachers' positions for 2021-22 school year. To the best of my knowledge, this decision has been based on enrollment data after a tumultuous pandemic year. To eliminate an integral teaching position based on numbers collected in a pandemic year seems incredibly short-sighted and will be a great deficit to the music program. As someone who has taught at both the middle and high school level in this district, I can speak to the importance of maintaining a strong program in both Liberty and Roosevelt Middle Schools. Assigning one teacher the job of running choir classes after school choirs and working on musicals will diminish the student-teacher relationships that are forged and will ultimately hurt the strength of our middle school music program. In turn, it will have a lasting negative effect on the high school school program. I'm not even sure how one would run an after-school activities or two choirs at once with A and B schedules varying weekly, the middle school schedule that limits students to choosing between art, chorus, band, or orchestra, which is really ridiculous to begin with. Our school district has been reorganized several times by the NAMM Foundation for its outstanding music education. Why are we seeking to weaken our strong program? This year, a virtual/hybrid instruction was a challenge for all subjects, but as a choral faculty, we provided opportunities for our students to be showcased through virtual concerts and other online platforms. These presentations were praised by administration and members of the Board of Ed. It's hard to fathom why a cut would be made to a program that truly stepped up in this very difficult year. At high school, the vocal music program is frequently called upon to participate in multiple school and community events by providing singers and entertainment. We're always happy to give our students any chance to contribute and perform. However, if the choral program is weakened... However, if the choral program is weakened at the middle school level, the pool of talent that is so often called upon the high school to lift the spirit of the community will be diminished. There are a multitude of high school performing groups that owe their strength in part to a thriving middle school vocal program, namely all of our choir courses, step teams, Jubilee Choir, Glee Choir, and the musical. This decision will also disproportionately affect students of color in our district. Seeing in choirs and performing groups has always been a tough stone of this diverse community, and a large segment of the choral groups reflect that diversity. By decreasing the amount of instruction available to students interested in vocal music, you will be robbing our diverse population of opportunities for growth and social-emotional learning. I thank you for listening to my statement. It's ironic that I need to rely on a colleague to read my plea as I am otherwise engaged in technical rehearsals for the spring musical. Thank you so much for listening on behalf of John Helyer. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Finkst. Matan, Maten, I apologize. Halsey, you should be able to unmute yourself. And after you stating your full name and address, you may begin your comment.
Hi, thank you. My name is Imden Halsey. I live on 112 Elliott Place, West Orange, New Jersey. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Ms. Soto at Hazel Avenue School. We have a special relationship, while children have a special relationship with the librarian at Hazel. She has contributed time, off-hours, and also contributed to the, I guess, the exploration of our children's pathway into a new world through her selection of books and through the guidance that she gives the kids on a daily basis through their search for, I guess, new worlds, new knowledge with books. It seems that the cut of librarians in West Orange is going to have a tremendous impact for our children. And I'm here as a concerned parent that I don't want to see any child left behind in our school district. Hazel has, I don't want to say dismal, but less than stellar results when it comes to reading and reading comprehension. And taking a librarian out of the school just seems like a negative. And I would like to hear from the board and from Mr. Cassone about what is the replacement. In my job in corporate America, you know, one of the rules that we follow is that we never let someone go without having a plan in place that's going to cover what that person does. And so I would, I would like to hear about that more. And I would also like for us to save our librarians. I would also like for us to save our music programs. And I would like an in-depth explanation about, you know, what is going into these, these changes? Why are these changes being proposed? And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Mary M., you should, alright, you are using an older version of Zoom, so I'm going to promote you to panelist. Just don't touch anything. There we go. Now you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you for this opportunity. Mary Moore Stubbs, consultant with the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, Box 20, uh, Box 140 Springfield, New Jersey. School library media specialists are the essential staff of the training expertise in New Jersey Department of Education certification that can, that can assist you in meeting district goals and complying with state regulations regarding implementation of school library services. Numerous studies throughout the United States have demonstrated that students in schools with effective school library programs learn more, get better grades, and score higher on standardized tests than their peers in schools without comparable resources. They can't be replaced by aides, parent volunteers, substitute teachers, or classroom teachers. Nationwide anecdotal studies have shown that when school, when school library media specialists are removed, overtaxed teachers often find it necessarily necessary to simply cut research projects and information skills from their lesson plans. The reason: School library media specialists are highly trained and highly skilled in information science, and as such, are uniquely poised to provide students with essential skills for 21st century success. On January 3rd, the State Board of Education adopted the 2020 New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Included in the new standard nine, career readiness, life literacies, and key skills are strands for information and media literacy, technology literacy, and digital citizenship, which specifically relate to school library media specialists as the certified teachers who both instruct in evaluation, creation, and utilization of media and serve as school leaders in privacy, data, property, information, and identity. In addition, CUSAC requires that district boards of education ensures that all students have access to library media services that are connected to classroom studies in each school building, including access to computers, school district-approved instructional software, appropriate books, including novels, anthologies, and other reference materials that motivate students to read in and out of school and conduct research. New Jersey Association of School Librarians is very concerned about a district's ability to adhere to both the New Jersey current student learning standards and CUSAC government's indicators. As a library and media specialist, it's needed to not only select and curate appropriate resources, but also provide professional development to fellow educators in this area. A classroom teacher or teacher-coach assigned to cover the school library does not have the proper certification and training to provide these services. Additionally, there is no approved New Jersey Department of Education certification for other job titles to serve in the role of school library media specialists. According to New Jersey Administrative Code, the school library media specialist endorsement is required for any person who serves as a school library media specialist in grades preschool through 12. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just put you back as a... Need to move you back, and I can't find there it is. More. Okay. Going back over here. Ms. Paul, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak. State your full name and address.
Good morning. Excuse me. Yeah, we're almost there. We're almost there. Sorry. Good evening. Jennifer Paul, elementary school teacher, 20 years, West Orange School District. I'm going to speak very quickly on behalf of our elementary libraries. Our elementary libraries and librarians are an integral part of our literacy program. Libraries are the homes of our students' imaginations. They provide the books and stories that allow imagination to soar. They provide the facts and information that help our children grow and quench their interest. Our librarians are the heart of our buildings, fulfilling a thirst for both knowledge and fantasy for our youngest learners. If librarian positions are cut, the group that loses out is our children. Our children, who are excited every week to go to school library and talk to their favorite librarian, the person who knows exactly what kind of book will hook even the most stubborn of readers, because they have spent weeks watching as that same student lovingly ran his fingers over the spines of dinosaur books. Our children, who because, for one reason or another, may not have access to the town library and who instead find solace and joy amongst the stacks of the school library, are children who consistently rank library as one of their favorite specials in classroom surveys, because it is there that they are free to create, imagine, and explore. It is truly the room where it happens. I know it has been stated, but it bears repeating. Judy Bloom once said, "Librarians save lives by handing the right book at the right time to a kid in need." After the year we have been through, shouldn't we strive to keep our librarians as the bridges between what we are told to learn in school and the subjects that inspire us? Shouldn't we do everything we can to protect them so that future students can fall in love with that one book, handpicked just for them, that only their librarian could choose? Librarians, the heart of literacy, offer our children a world to explore and connect with in the most imaginative and creative ways possible? Don't you remember being a kid and listening to that beloved librarian read you Caps for Sale, encouraging you to act out that part of the peddler and the monkeys? Where would you be without that librarian? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Vanessa Turner, you should be able to unmute yourself. State your name and address, please.
Good evening. This is Vanessa Turner. I am a second-grade teacher at St. Cloud. I would like to thank you for your hard work and dedication. However, I must say that I was very taken aback when I heard of the possible elimination of the positions of two media specialists in our district. Surely not West Orange that offers high-quality public education to its students. Surely not West Orange that prides itself in literacy and top-notch technological advances. Have we really minimized our librarians to simply being the nice ladies and gentlemen who check out books to children and read them cute stories from time to time? These professionals work alongside the teachers as they help us by providing resources that are in alignment with the curriculum. They also have their own curriculum across multiple grade levels. Allow me to speak about my library media specialist, Mrs. Kimberly Pallett. Every time I need help with my second graders, she provides it. Every time. Her lessons for her students are well-planned and engaging. She is not just the book lady. She is a professional educator. We talk about STEM education. I've seen her do projects with children across all grade levels in this area that have blown my mind. She also provides training to teachers in my building at faculty meetings from time to time. My colleagues and I find it interesting that we lost a reading specialist at St. Cloud and now possibly a librarian. Allow me to speak about Joyce Soto, library media specialist at Hazel. I've known her for years as a parent of children who were once students in this district. When schools suddenly shut down last year due to the pandemic, Mrs. Soto was one of the individuals who trained teachers in the area of technology so that we could be more effective in asynchronous instruction. Specialists are called specialists for a reason. Treat them as such. Letting these esteemed professionals go will cause a void in education and in school communities. Please reconsider. Find a creative way to find the money needed so Mrs. Pallett and Mrs. Soto and, and other library media specialists can remain with us. Why? Because we are West Orange. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Bev Tyndall, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Beverly Tyndall. I'm West Orange High School Library Media Specialist. Happy School Library Month. School libraries matter, and so do the professionally-certified people who administer them. This is not the first time members of the library media department have been targeted. It is disappointing and tiresome. Please understand it feels like déjà vu. Eliminating librarians and their programs for sport is insulting. We wholeheartedly thank colleagues, community members, and other advocates who came out for us once again tonight. Chipping away at a department by eliminating one or two professionals here and there is short-sighted and hurts the library program, and the entire district and the communities they serve suffer. It is quite frankly, a mismanagement of funds. You are probably familiar with Jenga. You know what happens when you take two planks from the bottom. You take a really risky chance that the whole structure will collapse top-down. I want to remind you how valuable our library spaces, virtual or physical, how priceless our library programs, and especially our certified library media specialists are. In fact, I have presented at international and state conferences telling everyone that we are appreciated and supported by our administrators. Hmm. At this time, I would like to publicly acknowledge that we are very lucky to have a supervisor who steadfastly advocates for us. Nancy Mullen is a formidable, hard-working warrior who understands the value of what we do, challenges each and every day, and I personally thank her. Julie Matts and I gave a presentation right here, January, January 7th this year, giving just a glimpse of what we all do. The accolades came in from the superintendent, the board members, the community members and colleagues. We then proceeded to present at the NJC Annual State Conference in March, again with great reviews. We have 4,000 views as of tonight. Apparently of short memories, and I don't have time in three minutes, so you can review it when you're able. We have heard many trendy, albeit important vocabulary words at extensive PD: social, marginal, learning, diversity, multiculturalism, tolerance, access inequity, lost year, increased literacy, learning gaps. In this district, who do you think are the custodians of diverse and multicultural texts? Access inequity? Who assures that students have equitable access to digital and physical resources? Professionally-trained, skilled, and certified media specialists read countless reviews and attend webinars all year long in order to choose the very best, the latest in publishing, ensuring our population is equally represented in our resources. Don't forget, we are the caretakers of a lot of district dollars, and we take that responsibility seriously. Social, emotional? Where are the safe havens in our schools? The libraries are not only comments, learning comments, but comfort zones for countless students who feel safe and valued. Are we paying lip service to this lingo? In fact, you who are in charge of the management of finances in this district do not understand how much of a bang for the buck you get. Have you thought about what will suffer when the libraries are dark? I will also add quickly that you should be adding a library, not eliminating two. Our goal is to build and support literacy from the bottom up at the newly expanded preschool. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyndall. Nicole Ruffo, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. I just wanted to echo a lot of the comments that were made, especially by the Hazel PTA president, Ms. Richardson, Mrs. Matts, the previous speaker. Librarians are so important, and I do remember being at a board meeting, I think it was two years ago, advocating for the same special librarians in the center of our schools. As a former teacher, I know how important the librarians were to support me in my teaching. And I also see how important it is for the students in the school. I especially think so much this year about my four children and their kind of lack of wanting to read physical books right now. I think they spend all day, you know, looking at the screens, and they are processing so much information of words on a screen, and they are reading. But I think about what it will be like when this is over and we are back in the building, normal, and we are accessing the library, and how important those books are going to be, and how important the librarian will be in that moment. There's been so much talk of that after this pandemic, the arts and literature, all of those things will be part of the healing process that we will need. And I don't think people realize how much of that we will, we will need to participate in. Also, thinking about cuts in the choral program is devastating. I've seen the productions in the, the high school, and I know how important music and arts are, especially when we are coming together and trying to navigate the, the time after this. And we'll go on for many years. We will be processing what has occurred in the last 13 months. So I just would ask that you reconsider the, the cuts, especially to an elementary school librarian is, it would be devastating to the school. And I hear the pain in all of the families calling from Hazel. And I would just ask that it's thought about what other options there are, and we can be creative. We can find something else. And then also just remembering the January 7th Board of Ed meeting when we were having these very intense discussions about a return to school and what a bright light that LMC presentation was. And I remember everyone was just like, wow, by that presentation and thinking about how miraculous it was, everything that they had put together and everything that they are doing behind the scenes to help the teachers and the students. I'm also really thankful that Dr. Calfani has been appointed to help with the diversity training with our staff. I was a little disturbed by Ms. Merklinger questioning the vetting process of the appointment of Dr. Calfani. Our district will gain so much from his knowledge, expertise, and experience. And every time that I've heard him speak, I learned something valuable. So it's no wonder that he was recommended by many for this position. And I'm really excited to see what he does with our staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffo. Emily Orr, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hello, my name is Emily Orr, and I'm the library media specialist at Kelly. Tonight, I want to speak about how the cuts of two librarians will affect our program as the other librarians are spread around to cover classes. A few years ago, Kelly was the recipient of an extremely generous gift that allowed us to renovate the library media center to include a maker space and areas for students to collaborate, create, research, and practice other skills expected of 21st century learners. Students loved and still love the new library. And then the itinerant position was cut, and they lost time in that library. And they lost time in that library. Kindergarten students lost 15 minutes from every class over the year. That's a third of the amount of library time they had the previous school year. While others, older students lost five minutes from every class. Now with new cuts, students will lose even more time. And it's not just time lost in the space, it's time lost learning about coding, about 3D printing, about the social and emotional learning that we, library media specialists, have been practicing with students for years. Many students are exposed to computer science for the first time in library because across the district, we celebrate Hour of Code in December with grades kindergarten and up. It's time lost finding books that students are going to connect with. Books that might inspire them to become a reader, a learner, an empathetic person, books that connect them with other people and experiences. It's time lost learning how to become literate in information, in media and in technology. Cutting one position two years ago cost our students. How will cutting two positions now affect them? It's a question I hope we don't have to answer, especially after a year like this one, when students have needed the familiar faces of teachers they've known since kindergarten to help them navigate the social, emotional and technology changes we've had, challenges we've had this year and that we are still experiencing. Please reconsider cutting staff from next year's plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Harry, please state your full name. You should be able to unmute.
I can. Good evening, everyone. My name is Harry Klein. I live at 40 Oak Ridge Road. And I am a concerned parent with my child going to Hazel School. First, I have to acknowledge Emily Orr. And what you just shared was really concerning how cutting a, you know, cutting one person can have such a huge impact on time lost for the students. I had no idea that that was a way that it could play out. So thank you for sharing that. Like Nicole Ruffo, you know, I can't really say my, can share my concerns much better than already has been shared with you. But what I want to say that I think is encouraging is I sit here watching each of you and there are times when someone says something that you are truly affected and that's encouraging. I see you nodding your heads. I see you understanding the concerns that are being expressed, especially when Ms. Richardson or Molly Eisen or our PTA President Fatu is speaking and you all are riveted. No one is looking away during those during those talks. So that's really encouraging to know that our concerns are being heard. I sent each of you a couple emails today. And the latest one was at 2:24 PM and I would ask that you really please read that email over so that you can really understand my point of view. In my emails, I highlight an article that was written by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And it's the non-negotiable role of school librarians. And I'd like to simply highlight a portion of it. The new National School Library Standards for Learners, School Librarians and School Libraries were released by the American Association of School Librarians in 2018 and provide a fantastic resource for principals. I would challenge any school leader to review the standards and not see the very real connections and links to the instructional work that our schools aspire toward. And then it gives you a link to connect to. And then there's they talk about a book that was written and the authors talk about the 21st century skills, being critical thinking and problem solving, collaborating, collaboration across networks, agility and adaptability, initiative and entrepreneurship, effective oral written and multimedia communication, accessing and analyzing information, curiosity and imagination. And then they can, they they make the link that our libraries are able to provide those skills to our students. I know you guys are getting a lot put on you. I just ask that you really reconsider this decision about our librarians and I appreciate all of the work that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Stacy Millet, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, this is Stacy Millet from 1 Barbara Avenue. I was calling, I wanted to get a little bit more clarification on the planning process as it relates to returning to full school days, five days a week. I was wondering what the timeline and deadlines have been set and who's monitoring those and how those will be reported out to the parents and the community so that we can make the choices we need to make to ensure that the learning goes for our children are met. So if any further information could be provided along those lines, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millet. Rachel Goodman, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. My name is Rachel Goodman and I'm at 136 Walker Road and I'm speaking because I'm concerned about the personnel cuts, especially to the library program. I do not understand why the board would choose to remove library specialists from Title I elementary schools with extremely high circulation numbers, which demonstrates just how much students use the library in these schools. The students that these cuts will disproportionately impact are low income students who come from marginalized communities, many of which need the additional support that these specialists provide. The students come from families where there isn't money to go to bookstores, where their parents can't take time off of work to take their kids to the public library in town. So the school library is the only place where they have access to books of all kinds, but especially books with characters who look like them and represent their racist cultures and faiths. Having specialists who can help students find themselves in literature or help students outside of these same communities to see characters outside of their own experiences helps to create lifelong readers who study show, end up being more empathetic, intelligent and kind people. It may not be something that you can measure in their test scores, but it matters to who these students will become and you should care about helping them be more than their test scores. Every program and specialist that you cut in libraries and especially replaced with six-figure administrative positions directly reinforces the feeling for low income and marginalized students that their educational needs are of no concern to the district. Additionally, I'm an associate editor of college undergraduate textbooks and I spend my days talking with professors across the country and everywhere from community colleges to Ivy Leagues and every single professor that I work with and speak with has one complaint when it comes to their students and that's that their students don't know how to use a library. They don't know how to access the databases that they need for research. They don't know how to utilize archival resources. They don't even know how to search a card catalog. And they ultimately fall behind in all of their introductory college courses because they lack these basic skills. I don't understand why a district like ours that relies so heavily on touting our high percentage of college acceptances would essentially pull the rug out from under students at the very beginning of their education and put them at a disadvantage from succeeding. I was a poor student in the West Orange School District and I relied on every single school library that I had access to in order to bolster my education. And now I've made my career in providing equitable education for all students, no matter their background. I learned those values from this school district, including the librarians that I love. And I moved to cut these positions, flies in the face of everything that the district reports to be about and taught me to be about. And it just says once again, in a way that this entire country continues to reinforce, that only the students who matter are those who can independently afford access to books, music and all the parts of an education that cannot be found on the page or in a test score. And I urge you to reconsider cutting these programs. Not only for the students who desperately rely on these programs and the specialists and libraries, but for all the students in the district because it's not just going to benefit one type of student, but all types of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Dr. Janice Diaz, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello and good night. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am Janice Johnson Diaz. I am the mother of Marley Diaz, who is the founder of the 1,000 Black Girl Books Campaign, who is the Chair Representative for the National Education Association NEAs Read Across America and the Ambassador for National Library Card Month. And libraries have been a part of our entire life, both here in West Orange, also in Michigan and in Pennsylvania where we've lived. I have been really very, very disturbed by the district's decisions over the past year. I was not as attentive in prior years, but I've started to pay close attention. And what I have now come to realize is a message that my daughter repeats when she speaks, which is you are not taking issues of equity seriously. You're not intentional about issues of equity. And so these inequities are going to continue to happen. Only through intentionality can we actually achieve the outcomes that we really want to have happen. We want to live in a society where people are creative, are thoughtful, engaged and connected. I know that you all want this. I have met each of you. I've spoken to each of you and I know this is something that you desire. But you have not yet fully put together how you are going to get there. Because if you had, you would have seen that any decision to cut a library is deeply unjust and is going to derail your overall goals. If you intend to live in a society that is free of crime, a society that fosters creativity, values people and can keep you and your children safe, you need to do the work now. And that work begins by making an investment in your librarians. They're often the most brilliant people in a room. They have helped my child when her very kind teacher did not recognize that diversity mattered and she needed to see herself. But diversity is not just for black and brown kids, it's also for the white kids. If they fail to see black and brown kids and understand their stories, they will grow up to be dispassionate and hateful people. They will be responsible, as they currently are, for the crimes and the terrorism in the society. If you want to abate these social ills, I'm going to ask you once again that you get yourselves to be intentional about your outcomes and therefore be intentional in your process. Please keep our librarians. Please decide today to make an investment that will last beyond this moment and will enrich all of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Rhea Goyle, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is Rhea Goyle and I live at 22 Rosmont Terrace. I'm a senior at West Orange High School and I'm here to advocate for the library program. From my elementary years at Redwood to the West Orange High School Library Program, I've been able to cultivate not only my reading skills, but my writing skills as well, learning from the best authors like Tolstoy and Angie Thomas. These very skills have led me to pen my book, the Gen Z book, which will be publishing next week, actually. As a student of West Orange for my entire life, since kindergarten to now as a senior, I would hate to see the library program cut or compromise in any way. It gave me a place to learn without about anything that I ever wanted to in the world and the library media specialist only made my time at the library even better. Without the library, I wouldn't have been able to write my book, be in all the honors classes and AP classes that I have taken as a student at West Orange High School. And without the library, I wouldn't be able to research for the President Student Climate Initiative or be an advocate for girls at the United Nations. Ms. Tuzo, my favorite library specialist at Liberty Middle School was a mentor for me then and still is now. She helped me through all of the literary classics and even helped me on the academically speaking team at my time at Liberty. The love and support that I felt from the library community and the library media specialists is something that I would never want to rob any students in the future of. And those experiences truly created who I am today. The libraries in our school are truly the heart of all of our schools. We have beautiful libraries and amazing staff that create activities and events for all of their students. And I couldn't be more proud to be a product of the West Orange School and library system. So a cut in the library system would be a cut in the student successes. Cutting any and compromising anything on the library program would mean taking away safe spaces for students and cutting really future authors like me from Western schools. So I hope that you reconsider the decisions in terms of library program and really give students opportunities to success and, you know, really attain their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhea. The next person is listed as Sarah. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, is that working?
Yes, it is.
This is Sarah Dering at 47 Oak Ridge Road. I really stayed on this call tonight for Fatu, who is our PTA President at Hazel. She's a tireless advocate for our school. I agree with all of her thoughts. And I also already sent an email today with my thoughts on Ms. Soto and why our Hazel librarian is really important to our community. But I also really wanted to share my daughter's word. She's a fourth grader. So that's why they're so simple. Ms. Soto is a very nice teacher, but she also keeps her class orderly. She encourages thoughts, ideas and questions. It is also good to have another black teacher at Hazel because we don't have many. We barely got a chance to know her. Please let her stay. So that's out of the mouth of a 10-year-old girl. So please consider those thoughts. I also hope that I'm allowed to speak on reopening, even though I've spoken on this topic before because the topic is really important to me and impacts my life and the life of my child on a daily basis. I mean, we really need to get serious here. I I support, I support our librarians, but I really think we need to start thinking more positively and more creatively about school. Especially school full time in the fall. I'm hearing people speak really passionately about children's need to check out books and walk into the library and have interactions with their librarians, but that's not happening now. It hasn't happened for a year. Our kids need to get back to school next year full time. I honestly cannot believe that I just heard Dr. Kascone talking in terms of obstacles and not solutions for next year. Are we going to like see more of the same of what we've seen this year, like excuses, backpedaling, claims that parents don't understand? It's just really insulting. All of us understand that it's complex. I mean, many of us have had to make complex decisions for our own workplaces, but we have to try to get creative. We need to try to get our older students into our schools more than a handful of times a month. It just makes no sense to have one or two students in a class at once. It's not the emotional and in-person education that our students need. And I just find it really disappointing to be so negative. We need to be solutions based, thinking about ways to get our kids in school and to have, you know, some life back. We can't just keep talking about we can't do this and we can't do that. Other districts have managed to do this and to do more than we have at every point of this year. And we can denigrate their efforts as ill-advised and against the rules all we want, but they did it and they're doing it right now. And I'm just really tired of hearing the excuses and excuses for why we can't. Thanks.
Thank you. Tracina Strong, my apologies, Bee Bay?
Yes, Tracina Strong Beebe. I'm advocacy chair for the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, PO Box 1460 Springfield, New Jersey. It's a pleasure to be here with your multiple speakers. And I'm here to represent American Library Association. They released a letter today and we have had a outpouring of concern in your community and I would like to make this statement. At a moment when the ability to navigate a vast and constantly shifting world of information is a matter of profound consequence, we are alarmed to hear that West Orange Public Schools proposes to cut the number of certified informational professionals, librarians or school library media specialist and leave students in the district without appropriately staffed libraries. With more than 60 studies from across the country, they show that student achievement from reading scores and digital proficiency to graduation rates is higher in schools with professionally staffed libraries. Pairing national school library standards in New Jersey learning standards, your school librarians impact every learner in West Orange Public Schools. Embedding a continuum of literacies across the curricular curriculum and providing access to resources, tools and learning experiences that nurture critical thinking, exploration and innovation. They support their colleagues with curated resources, collaborative instruction, thoughtful technology integration and professional development. West Orange school librarians have risen to the challenges of this past year with intentionality for the academic and emotional well-being of their learning communities, continuing to build a shared culture of reading and inquiry. Now, as districts address the impacts of COVID-19 on students, school librarians are integral to the community's resilience and to the priorities outlined by the Educational Secretary Cordona for allocating of the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. The proposal to cut school librarians contradicts West Orange Public Schools' strategic plan and undermines the district's commitment to equity. Moreover, New Jersey's administrative code requires that students receive library media special services and information literacy instruction. Education in this information age requires full-time certified informational specialists. And we urge you to appropriately staff at all West Orange schools with full-time school librarians. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Robin Isserles, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, thank you very much, Robin Isserles, twenty-two Yale Terrace. I've been following the Board of Ed's commitment towards its goals of creating a district with the priorities of diversity, equity, and inclusion with great interest. And I'm intrigued and hopeful that a new administrator whose charge is DEI would really help us to realize these necessary goals. Unfortunately, inequity runs deep in our district, in our athletic programs, in our curriculum, and in our faculty and staff. Here is what I don't understand. I'm not sure how or why this cannot be handled by our current newly hired director of HR. Perhaps there is an explanation and I'm open to hearing it. However, it seems quite clear that at a time when there are cuts to staff, all but one of which will affect women, one of whom is our only library media specialist of color, and another non-faculty staff who is one of our few Arabic speakers in the district, perhaps it would be better to restore the cuts first. And then, once we secure the federal monies we are expected, we can then move forward with a new administrative position. In the Board of Ed meeting on January seventh, we were presented with the amazing work commitment and expertise of the library media specialists throughout the district. It's a shameful sign of disrespect to cut these two positions merely a few months later. We've heard the disrespect they are feeling tonight. As a district parent, I'm quite saddened by this, as I had hoped we were well past the days of faculty and staff disrespect. Lastly, we started this evening hearing from our student Board of Ed liaisons who spoke of how much they fell in love with theater and the creative arts during their middle school years, which makes the proposed cuts all the more disturbing in the middle school. In a time of exemplary work and dedication through a global pandemic that has changed just about everything about our lives, allow me to share with you all that all that has been added to our middle school choral program over the last few years. Doubling the students in the program before COVID, the creation of the Performing Arts Angels Booster Club, visits by multiple Broadway television and opera stars just this year for the first established masterclass series, increased the performances, reworked the curriculum to be musical literacy and performance-based, and restarted and massively expanded the Glee Club. Despite all of this and all that we know about the importance of the arts and literacy and helping students thrive, these are the cuts you are proposing. This is not an easy time. I know this. Thank you for serving the West Orange community. I do hope that you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Juan Quera, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. It's Christina Hunkera from fifty-one Beverly Road. I'm a Hazel parent and a Hazel PTA board member, and I wanted to also express my concern for the removal of the Hazel Elementary School librarian. As you all know, Hazel is the Title I school and our reading scores are overall lower than any of the other schools in the district with the exception of Washington. And now you guys are taking away our librarian. I just don't see how this makes sense. How is this better serving our students? Also, all this push for diversity and representation that the district is pushing for, most of our students are Black and Hispanic. Ms. Soto is only a handful of African-American teachers that we have at Hazel. She represents so many of our students. If you're removing her, it would be removing representation for so many of our students. I'm aware that the board is phasing out a number of positions throughout the schools in order to hire two to three directors of Central, one of them being the director of diversity. But seriously, these teachers at the school make a much bigger impact and difference to our students than a big title over at Central who has no idea what's going on in our school building. I feel that you are contradicting this huge push for diversity by removing this teacher that has made a huge impact in our school and our students in a very short time. I'm hoping that you can reconsider. I'm sure you can come up with a different and better way to save money. Our kids' futures should not be jeopardized for this. Thank you again for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Orianna, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Orianna Palumbo, thirty-three Baxter Lane. Can you hear me? Yes. Hi there. I'm going to ask about combining cohorts for the middle and high school. I heard the reasons in the beginning of the call. I understand the guidelines. What I don't understand is, from what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers in the middle and high school are so low in the classrooms, like three is the most I've heard, and I acknowledge it could be more than that. But if we did combine and double and are at six and kept the six-foot guidelines, because I understand the state that the state is in, that we can't switch the three feet, which is fine. But if we could keep at six feet, and now that that survey was sent out with parents having to decide whether or not they're going to send their kids virtuals, shouldn't we have a better idea of those numbers? Meaning, if we can combine and keep the six feet, is that a possibility? Obviously, only if the numbers are in line, but now that that latest survey was sent out, when can we expect to see the numbers from that survey if they support perhaps combining? Because I worry too about September. How are we going to get to five days if we're still at only two days every other week? I mean, our kids aren't even in every, I'd settle for one day every week at this point, just to have some consistency. My middle schooler has been in school only six days so far. This is his first year at Liberty. And every time he's ready to go in again, he is nervous because he can't remember where his classes are because it's been two weeks since the last time he's there and understandably, he forgets. So I'd like to see some more consistency for them as well and some days added on. Understanding again that, you know, we have to keep six feet. If we have the numbers to support it, can that happen? And if so, when can we look forward to that? Because they needed to, yes, they're doing better than the elementary school kids are. I get it. But it's just as important for their education and socialization. They need to be in school as well. And I feel at this point, over a year later, it's time and it needs to happen. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. As I had mentioned earlier, we're going to take a short break. Let's make it about ten minutes or less. We will be back. We appreciate everyone who's here. I think we still have about sixteen people who are waiting to speak. We've been here sitting for four hours and it is necessary that we stand up and move around for a minute. So thank you, everyone, for your patience and we'll be right back.
So next up, Sharon Ortiz. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kascone and Board of Ed members. As a community member and taxpayer, I appreciate the Board-
Sharon, I'm sorry. Can you state your full name and address, please?
Sharon Ortiz, Sixth Lowell Avenue and fifteen-year educator at the high school.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Kascone and Board of Ed members. As a community member and taxpayer, I appreciate the Board of Education being fiscally responsible and prudently managing our expenses. I am, however, confused and concerned by the elimination of our valuable education professionals. Why would positions such as library and media specialists, administrative assistants, or choral instructor be in jeopardy? They play very important roles in our education team and in the lives of students, both inside and outside of the classroom. In a year where our district audit indicated a surplus and an increase in funding from the state of New Jersey and federal government are forthcoming in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, why would we need to release valuable staff members? They are more than line items. They offer more value than whatever savings and salaries the Board of Education will realize. My colleagues, many of whom live in West Orange, work very hard and make valuable contributions to our children and staff. They deserve praise, appreciation, and the ability to continue to enhance our West Orange school community. Good evening, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sharon. Wendy Grave, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I did it again. I'm on the wrong Zoom. This is Laura Nessner, five zero four Eagle Rock Avenue. So I have quite a few things. So we keep hearing about learning loss, learning gaps. So how exactly are we finding out about this learning loss? I know my daughter has not had a formal assessment since September, October of two thousand and nineteen. So how are we going to know what her learning loss actually looks like? Because she's doing fine in school academically. But when she's in the ninety-ninth percentile for reading and ninetieth percentile in math at that point, what if she's only at the ninety-fifth percentile or the eighty-fifth percentile? She's still got a learning loss, but you're not going to acknowledge that because she's still above grade level. So I'd like to, I'd love that to be addressed. Fridays, I think I heard something about Fridays, but I was on a PTA board meeting, so I was listening to two meetings at once. We need to have live instruction. It's unacceptable at this point. It needs to be done. It has to be done. All other districts are able to do something on their quote-unquote cleaning days. It needs to be done. We need to be, we need to have a plan for September for full-time school. You can't say we're going to plan to plan. I'm tired of hearing about planning to plan. You should have a full-time plan. And then, if something changes, you already know how to do hybrid, right? We already have a plan on how to do that. Plan for the full-time school. How are we providing full-day enrichment when we can't figure out lunch in our school for this year? Quarantines, I heard something about quarantines. We really need to figure out those quarantines. So now to the librarian. I am more concerned about the fact that you're cutting staff, but you approved two director-six-figure salaries positions. I do not accept the response I got because I know that's just nonsense. In the business world, you usually go from the top down. You cut the fat from the top. And then, if you have to, the operational staff gets cut. The kids need the people in the buildings with them more than they need a director of equity inclusion. Our HR director, I'm sure, could do that. He's HR. He should be all about directory, diversity, and inclusion. And I think that's it. So we need to figure it out. Enough is enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Kravitz, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. We can.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Kravitz, two seventy-six Gregory Avenue. With comments on the choral and librarian positions, I earnestly entreat you to reinstate these positions, their importance, and the importance of the people who fill them cannot be underestimated. I know from many years as an educator, parent of public school-educated children in this district, child of educators, and a public school product myself, that there can be a tendency to undervalue specials positions vis-à-vis classroom teachers. And we do so at our peril and at the expense of our children's learning, also at the expense of the support that the classroom teachers need to do their jobs effectively. Specific to the choral position, having one person serve both Liberty and Roosevelt shortchanges both populations and hampers the ability of the teacher to be effective. This reduces the value of the experience for the students and reduces the experience completely. Additionally, since choral work depends so much on an in-person experience, many students who would have otherwise have participated have dropped back in the remote learning time. But this by no means represents the number of students who want to be involved and who will be involved when students are back in person full-time. To make a decision based on a short-term pandemic-affected low enrollment in choral classes would inflict future disadvantage on students, on music programming at the middle school, and moving up to the high school. Students returning from the challenges of this year will need opportunities for a variety of artistic expression more than ever. And the district has responsibility to provide that. Such opportunity stands to benefit students and staff all around. And I heard Robin Isserles talk about the additional benefit that the Liberty choral director has brought, which stands to benefit everyone. Specific to the librarian positions, we live in a media-driven world. Just because this has encompassed so much more than printed books doesn't mean that librarians have lost value in the public school experience. By contrast, their wide expertise is far more important than ever before. To curate materials for students and staff helps students understand how to sort through endless sources. And I will tell you, as an academic coach at Rutgers, that many college students do not know how to do this enough and support overloaded teachers who don't have time to research and choose possibilities when it comes to media options and materials. If we force students to share librarians, it will reduce what each librarian can provide. That reduces what students receive, reduces the support the classroom teachers receive. This is, it hurts children twice to cut these positions, especially it hurts them directly, but also hurts them indirectly because it doesn't provide as much support to their classroom teachers. And it doesn't give students enough of an outlet. So the stress and anxiety that they are not able to let out will affect their ability to learn in the classroom. Library, media, and related arts get many students to want to come to school at all. And if they want to come to school, they'll be more open to learning. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. Rachel Keen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi. Hello?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, I'm just going to try to talk quickly. I want to ask why the-
If you can state your name and address first. That's okay.
It's late. Rachel Keen, twenty-two Schmidt Road. I want to ask why the district's not doing more to expand hybrid this year, given all the talk of equity lately and putting the best interests of students first. What has happened with schools across the state of New Jersey is not equitable. And West Orange is a very unfortunate and embarrassing example of that. The state opened up vaccinations to teachers and school staff on March fifteenth. Essex County shortly afterwards set aside spots, especially for teachers and staff. And long before both of these things happened, high-risk staff had ample opportunity to be vaccinated. Schools are extremely low risk for transmission of COVID- nineteen. Most in-school transmission is driven by teachers and not students. And if our teachers are vaccinated, the risk of in-school transmission is incredibly low. So we are very fortunate for that, but we are not leaning into that at all. We've made ventilation upgrades. We've bought PPE. We've bought Plexiglas. We have tents. And we are not using any of it. We are only keeping children out of school as long as possible or offering them crumbs of in-person learning. I don't understand why the district leadership is willing to take a gamble on almost seven thousand children's well-being in this way. And it's affecting my perception of the town and if I want to stay here, which is really disappointing. Looking at the calendar, by May third, all school staff should have had ample opportunity to be fully vaccinated. The vaccines are suspected to be almost a hundred percent effective at preventing hospitalization, severe illness, and death. And according to the largest study on this subject out of Israel, the vaccines are ninety-four percent effective at preventing even asymptomatic infection and transmission. New literature and research also supports that the vaccines protect against new variants. So why is the district not allowing children to have the opportunity to attend school full-time starting May third for the last few weeks of the school year after over a year with such limited in-person time? So many districts all over the state are doing this. A hundred and eighty-five districts are open full-time and more are planning to be open full-time in the next couple of weeks. Even though the entire state's Cali score is high, other districts have figured out how to make it work. And they're not small districts either. So is West Orange not worthy of the option? Do we not know any better? Why are we being treated this way in this town? And why are students here not being given the choice to attend school full-time? If we don't try it now, it's not going to work in the fall. And the students that have been out of school this long are going to be even harder to teach and be around in the fall. They're going to be educationally and emotionally regressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Next up, you're listed as Mark. You should be able to unmute yourself. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mark Maniscalco. I work in the high school. I have no need to repeat what others, who are obviously far more eloquent than I am, have already said about how eliminating librarians, vocal music teachers- have already said about how eliminating librarians, vocal music teachers, school-based secretaries and other positions will ultimately harm our children and our schools. They have quite fully explained how diminishing literacy programs, music instruction and other school-based services will negatively impact our children, our schools, our community. I'll focus instead on the fact that these cuts are wholly unnecessary. At a recent board meeting, we were lucky to hear from the auditors that there's a budget surplus, not a deficit, despite the expenditures that were necessitated by the pandemic. We also learned that next year we're getting almost 40% in additional state aid compared with the current year. Forty percent, that's huge. Meanwhile, we're creating new and expensive positions in central office and at the same time refusing to budget cap, to cap, but then somehow crying poverty. In fact, the BOE now has the ability to go to cap and far beyond, but so far has chosen not to do so. But tells us that its pockets are empty. That does not seem to me to be a good faith way to do business. But to be clear, even going to cap appears completely unnecessary to preserve these positions. We know this because as Dr. Kascón acknowledged in an article a few days ago, there is $8 million in federal funds expected to come our way. Money that is not relied upon so far in calculating this budget. That's an additional $8 million for next year. Help is on the way and serious help at that. With this impressive amount of money coming in, why are we cutting literacy and music programs? Why are we cutting administrative assistants who serve in counseling offices? Why are we cutting any other service? I can't tell you the real reason. I simply don't know why. I can tell you it makes no sense to me. But I can tell you that the reason is not because we cannot afford them. Thankfully for us all, with 40% additional state aid and a nearly $8 million coming from the federal government on the way, right now, there simply is no fiscal crisis in our schools. No one should be fooled by contrary claims. We can and should maintain these programs and positions. Our schools and children will be worse without them, and there is no serious and honest reason to cut them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Next up Alexandra Mizrahi, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Cookie. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Alexandra Mizrahi, 35 Watchon Avenue. The news of letting go staff and creating to non-necessary director position is very disappointing and discouraging, to say the least, of the work that you are doing with our children's budget. Can the Board of Ed and Scott please explain actions but on place at this time when we hear that you are all talking and talking about reduce state aid, even when the bills today are approved and passed, state the contrary. 20% of about, or about 498 million across all New Jersey district for program to address learning loss. 5% or about 138 millions must also go to learning recovery. 75 millions to fund learning acceleration efforts such as summer program and tutoring. 30 million from the state set aside for the provision of mental health service and support. Newark made a survey, Newark made a survey to gather data in how to use the money. 2.8 billions, billions the state will receive for schools or the district have to, not us. I am wondering what are the districts doing to get pieces of the, to get a piece of the pie? Or why are you not addressing the needs and utilizing the state money to keep the cuts away from the classroom? Which by the way, this is the biggest lie we as payers have heard for over the last 10 years. Lastly, as Senator Ruiz explained, as part of her bill for learning loss, which already approved, is already approved, the findings are in the line with the studies showing the student starting this school year academically behind. And the student of color and economical disadvantage, a student experiencing the most severe learning loss. The analysis found that black and Hispanic student lost more ground than white and Asian student. ELA, black student lost 43% of expected learning to this year. Hispanic, 37% expected of learning this year. Math, black student 50% and Hispanic 40% of expected learning this year. But you decide there was good to get rid of, of the variance, the variance, sorry, from a Title I school where majority are black or color students and Spanish. Because you do want to add more administrative position and don't forget with states' figures salary. What is the plan to address learning loss? Learning acceleration such as summer program, extended summer school, tutoring, compensatory service. Do you have a plan and when it will start? Because by now, it's kind of late to secure most of the most needed money for our district. Is my understanding the part of the work for which you were elected and hired is that, right? Or I'm incorrect? So the only thing that I'm asking you is, is money out there? For the first time ever, we have more money coming in than ever has happened in the history. And what are we doing? Oh, let me cut a bunch of people. We don't need these people. Let me hire this other because this is my friend and he need a six-figure salary. Okay, some things doesn't match. We always said that we're going to do the cut away from the classroom. But guess what? You only do inside the classroom. So something is wrong here and I want answers. Thank you, Cookie.
Thank you. Erin Kesselman, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Rebecca Moses, Erin's wife, One Galloway Court. I am in complete agreement with everyone who has spoken about the library and media specialists. I can't imagine a school without access to professional help with this part. But I really wanted to go back to the discussion about the choral teacher position and the choir teachers who have spoken, who are so rightly concerned about the loss of a choral instructor. Vocal music is one of the most basic and useful ways we can give our students to help process their feelings. While this year has been beyond difficult for musicians and music teachers, as we move toward whatever the new state of affairs will be, singing together is an incredibly important way to help our students listen to each other and work together to create something bigger than themselves. In addition to the needs that choral music fills and the entertainment that it brings, music education has been proven to increase test scores across multiple disciplines. I recognize that there are difficult decisions that need to be made, but librarians and choral directors are among the most critical faculty as we come back together and as we focus on the social and emotional well-being of our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Punzalan, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi, this is Krista Punzalan. I'm at 19 Colony Drive East. I am a mother of five children, two of them currently attend Hazel. I'd also like to advocate for keeping our full-time library and media specialists. I have a laundry list of reasons why we shouldn't be eliminating these positions, but you've heard them all already. Of course, our librarians help improve test scores and help to bridge the learning gap. But more than that, they shine a light on humanity. They give our children a window into worlds they don't have entry to. And they activate imagination, a love of learning and a passion for reading. This impacts our children for a lifetime. Our West Orange students deserve this. If we truly care about diversity, equity and inclusion, protecting our librarians is the way to show it. Hazel's librarian, Ms. Soto, has put her heart and soul into our school. She cares and the kids can feel it. As a mother and as a community member, I beg of you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joseph Romano, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, Joe Romano from Edison Central Six. First of all, thank you, Dr. Kascón and the Board of Education for navigating us through these crazy, crazy COVID times. I appreciate your leadership. Again, I am Joe Romano, a veteran teacher, very proudly teaching instrumental music band at Edison Central Six. I have served the students and community of West Orange my entire teaching career, spanning almost 30 years. Unfortunately, I learned last week that we lost a Liberty Vocal Music position and two Library Media Specialist positions. I would like to discuss both. Almost two years ago, a short time before Dr. Kascón was hired, vocal music instruction at the elementary level was reduced from two days a week to one day a week. With this new cut to our music program, one vocal music teacher will be expected to perform the job of two teachers as she will now travel to both Liberty and Roosevelt Middle Schools. Music is one of West Orange's crown jewels. Some parents have actually told me that they moved into town because of our strong music program, a program that our Board of Education has supported so strongly through the years. Having one teacher do the job of two places her in an arduous position, which will almost certainly not benefit our students. Now to our library and media specialists. They are some of the brightest, most dedicated and hardest-working ladies that I know, serving our schools and community. I have seen many in action throughout my tenure. They educate and share knowledge with our students and staff at the highest levels. At Edison, I am always amazed when I witness a student receiving help finding a book from our library media specialist, Mrs. Bocheese. It is truly a fascinating sight, seeing Mrs. Bocheese's demonstrative zest, zeal and expertise as she unearths the perfect books for her readers and non-readers who have such diverse tastes and reading levels. Mrs. Bocheese is a rock star. The education of our students, especially in this climate where children have experienced learning gaps, music and library media specialists will be needed now more than ever. Their instruction directly will affect social, emotional learning. How will learning gaps be met when now there will be staffing gaps? The superintendent and Board of Ed have always been creative in finding ways to keep our programs alive and striving. I hope that you can find a way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Mel Valdez, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mel Julie Valdez and I live at 16 Elm Street. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Kascón. I, you know, we've been on this call for hours. We have heard numerous parents and educators talk and stress how important it is to not cut the media specialist positions and, you know, also the cuts to the choral program. I'm just trying to understand why you have decided to make this decision. I will say that your decision to cut these positions and then, you know, decide to hire two administrators, it's wrong. It goes against equity and inclusion. And, you know, Hazel students should have access to Ms. Soto, who sounds amazing. I have a daughter who attends Washington School and Ms. Minterman has done an excellent job. And, you know, I've listened to parents stress how important it is to have a librarian. It is important to a student's academic success. For me personally, I love to read and that began as a student who attended a school that's similar to Hazel in Washington in another school district. I had dedicated educators and dedicated librarians and people who made sure to foster my love of learning and reading. I had access to an array of quality of books which translated into my academic success. I could say that it translated into me being successful in high school, college and graduate school. The saying goes, reading is fundamental. I implore you to reconsider this decision. And additionally, people have spoken about the music program. I think this is also important. It's an important extracurricular for students. It's important for students to have access to this, so please reconsider these cuts. There has to be another way. There has to be creativity in terms of finding the money. And I also do agree, the Director of Human Resources should be able to take on, along with the Diversity and Inclusion Committee regarding, I read the job description, a lot of the things that are enumerated in that job description can be done by these individuals until we have the money to hire those positions. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Goldfarb, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Josh Goldfarb and I'm a social studies teacher at Roosevelt as well as a lifelong and current town resident and taxpayer. As I sit here for the past few hours, as we all have, I'm listening to the community and what I really like to hear is that even though we have different opinions about some issues, there is one thing that we've all pretty much been agreeing on, and that's the staffing changes. Currently, I'm sitting in my bedroom looking at a stack of books that I'm excited to read. I have a mystery. I have a book about music. I have a book about pirates. I'm a product of the West Orange Public Schools and the librarians in Gregory, Roosevelt and West Orange High School have nurtured my love of reading and learning that continues to this day. Without them, I would not be where I am now. After college, I chose to return to this town to live because I know its soul. I know that it is a town that valued education and diversity. Becoming a teacher in this town, in fact, I currently teach in a very classroom in which I was once a social studies student, is a source of pride for me. However, I'm going to be honest, that pride is beginning to diminish. Seeing the cuts that are being proposed to our media specialists is offensive when we are expecting increased funds. It is my understanding that we are hiring a six-figure diversity specialist while also cutting one of the few people of color who work at Hazel. How do you miss this irony? I also understand that we may be cutting some secretarial positions. Anyone who has taught knows how important the secretarial staff is to the operation of a school. They know everything about how their building runs and they're the ones who could truly solve any problem. They serve a critical and thankless job. They are just as vital to the function of our schools as teachers, custodians and cafeteria staff. Simply put, the school will not function the same without them. Regarding the cuts to choral teachers, how do we expect our teachers to form bonds? And best know where their students need it, they are effectively doubling the number of students they teach by teaching in two different schools. And unfortunately, the arts are frequently the first on the chopping block when cuts are deemed necessary. But please consider that the arts helped many students and adults get through this past year. All these cuts will effectively result in us teachers doing more. And how much are we actually expected to do? How much more can we do? As a final point, I asked the Board to explain why teachers and students are in the buildings and yet, and administrators and guidance counselors and custodians, et cetera, yet the Board continues to meet virtually. Why are these meetings still being held? Why are these meetings not being held in a hybrid environment? Would it not be a show of support for all of us to see that you are willing to meet in person as well? Would it be awkward to meet while being socially distant? Yes. Would it be uncomfortable to wear masks for these meetings? Yes. Would it be difficult to figure out how to talk to the public who can come in person while also talking to the public online? Yes, but these are things that teachers are doing every day. Thank you for your time.
Sorry about that. Mark Robertson, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, this is Mark Robertson at 11 Cheshire Terrace in West Orange. Just want to say that, Dr. Kascón, when we hired you, one of the things that you touted was your diversity abilities and experience. And now you also have an HR director who should be well-trained and well-versed in diversity. At a time when you're looking at making critical staff cuts, you have added two big-money positions, you know, in areas where I think that the existing folks just need to do their jobs, to be honest. Second, do you understand where you really are? Leadership in music has been part of the very soul of West Orange schools for decades. We've had, we've had students who qualified for Junior Tony Awards. We've had students who have gone on to Broadway and off-Broadway productions. We've had students who have made music their careers and have spoken in front of us. One, one told us, one young lady told us about how music helped her to travel the world. I'm angry at the damaging decisions that you and the Board have made to eliminate the choral teaching position at Liberty Middle School and to remove one of our greatest teaching talents when it comes to arts in West Orange schools, Greg Santy. For several years, West Orange Public Schools has earned national recognition as a leader in music and the arts. And we've already cut back in elementary. That's still an issue never solved. And now middle school is a key area for talent development for- And now middle school is a key area for talent development for developing our talent pipeline, critical to delivering top-performance talent for high school. And you, it's just my way that one teacher is going to be able to handle the numbers of students adequately, handle the large number of students or degree clubs, all of which are, are critical to our kids' education. What did Mr. Santhy do when he came in? Well, when he first came on, Liberty was a mess. The, the, the music program was an absolute shamble. And he turned it around and soon word travels so fast among the students about how great a teacher he was, how much he engaged them, how he related to them, that very soon we had so many kids signing up not only for the class, but for the club, that we couldn't fit them all on stage. We had about fifty-five at one point. He's given a lot to the school. He improved our musical, our, our, he's actually improved our musical production. Beauty and the Beast was the best musical Liberty had ever done. And I say this as a drama papa and Liberty parent twice over, as well as board member to many, many of those events. And I'll say last, and, and my daughter's benefited from him more than any other music teacher. I can say that. And last, we talk about diversity. Do you know that he's the only LGBTQ teacher in Liberty, a school that's been troubled with issues around LGBTQ and, 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 and kids bringing their issues to faculty and to staff. And he's also one of the few who have been openly gay in the whole district. So I want you to think about this decision from a standpoint of, you know, how it impacts our music legacy and how it impacts diversity, which we seem to talk about a lot. And we hire, we're making this big hire, but when it comes down to critical decisions like keeping that, that, that sole black counselor or this sole LGBTQ teacher, it, it just, it just baffles your mind. Really, you gotta rethink these things, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Anna Natalia Pereira, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Well, hello everyone. Good evening and thank you for staying this, this long for us to do this.
Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
So I'm Anna Natalia Pereira. I'm my, I live one hundred Terrace Avenue. And I'm, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our Liberty Music Program, our Coral Instructor position. That is, and I follow in Mr. Robertson who said it very well. You know, this is not just about a teacher. I mean, certainly we have been fortunate enough at Liberty to have an amazing coral teacher. Mr. Santhy has brought so much to the program. But this is about the entire program and what it means for our school, for our kids. I'm a proud parent of four West Orange, you know, four kids in the West Orange system. All of them have been privileged to be part of the music chorus club and the band program at any different stages of their journey. My son, who's now a senior, has been participating in the music program since sixth grade. The theater talent show, and then he did choir for three years at the high school in the, the band. Not only, he wasn't able to join, for example, Glee or the theater because of demands of ROTC and also wrestling. But he's always been part of the music programs and continues to, you know, sing whether or not ROTC sing in as part of the program, singing the National Anthem. But their love of music has been in the fabric of what they experienced throughout the school. My triplet girls have been part of the music program since Redwood. They've done pretty much everything related to music, chorus, glee club, theater in sixth grade. And now in eighth grade, you know, with the challenges of seven and eighth grade and the challenging of the pandemic, this has been an incredible year for them as eighth graders and, and, you know, their glee club, their performing arts angels, it's all been part of, you know, what keeps them and helps them keep going. There's nothing better for them to experience the, the activities of that happen, you know, even, you know, even virtually with music. But this is not just about my kids, obviously. This is about the music program that has been an incredible experience for all the kids. Over a hundred and ten kids actually have participated in the last two years just at Liberty. The program has, you know, been giving kids, kids the opportunity to learn music at a high level of, of, of literacy of music that, you know, it is, it's priceless. I mean, you know, some of us have been fortunate enough to be able to get our kids through music. But this program has been able to provide an incredible high-level music to kids that may not be able to afford it ever. They have been given the opportunity to do masterclass. Broadway, television and opera stars have participated in their masterclass series. So it's just, you know, this is, it's unfair. It's, you know, having the kids be able to be part of this program and be able to continue to supply their talent that then feeds into the high school and the high school program that we all enjoy as part of our, of our town. It, it will be tremendous for them to see their teachers, you know, this, this position cut and one teacher have to be divided between two middle schools. So I, I really will like to put it out there that, you know, we, we really will need to, we need to keep our, our Liberty program as is. It will be critically important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brent Scott, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Brent Scott Espero. The West Orange, parent of a Redwood and Edison student. Let me begin by saying that I do not envy the situation the superintendent and you as members of the board are in regarding the appropriation of finite resources and governing this entire unprecedented year and last year. Many parents are presuming that librarians, coral teachers and administrative staff are being cut in order to facilitate the hiring of a Director of Diversity. I hope that the superintendent and board members can speak to that following public comment. I support the appointment of a Director of Diversity. It is important for diversity and inclusion to be institutionalized with a Director of Diversity who is committed to leading change through a systemic, relational and integrated approach, not leaving it to chance or to goodwill, but an experienced individual bringing an understanding of the science of diversity and a cogency to the implementing models, implementing of models and strategies to achieve diversity. I understood that many, I understand that many think that HR and diversity are one in the same. This is not the job of the HR Director. A Director of Diversity's job is to build and link schools and programs. It is important to note that diversity is about more than ethnic, racial or even gender diversity inclusion, but is much about inclusion of the disabled, be they students or staff or their families. It is about early English learners. It's about the diversity of understanding shifting demographics, changes in the economy, impact of new laws on state and state policies upon students and their families, but also local, regional and global marketplace demands for well-trained and social, for a well-trained and socially functional workplace. A diversity, a Director of Diversity has a finger on the pulse of students, staff, of mixed cultural families, mixed religious families. Finally, I would note that diversity or inclusion officers is not a new phenomenon. In fact, there is a good deal of scholarship around the importance and benefits of diversity and inclusion officers, not only in education, but also within the, within corporate America, where the position is widely utilized in order to achieve diversity, equality and diverse thinking. I hope that the superintendent and the board will address the matters that have been brought up. I understand people's confusion about an HR Director and a Diversity Director being one in the same. They're not. And I certainly hope that staff are not being cut in order to facilitate the hiring of executives. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing your responses.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Joyce Soto, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Joyce Soto, Sixteen Prospect Place employee and resident. I thank you for this time to speak and I will not repeat everything that has been shared already by my colleagues and my close friends and neighbors here in town. If you have not heard the message that they have put out, I would be astounded. I would like to take the opportunity to say that I appreciate the department that I am in. The Library Media Specialists are an awesome group of people and they inspired me to come into this profession. And I am happy to be here because I saw a need in this district and was happy to step up and to step into this position. Reasing two sons through the West Orange School District, they have definitely benefited not only from the library department and the opportunities that they've had there, but they have definitely benefited from our music department as well. And I just wanted to take that opportunity to thank my colleagues that encouraged and gave me the encouragement to go ahead and to pursue this profession. Now I will get into my written statement that I have for you guys. This evening, I'd like to acknowledge the task of, that you have created in balancing the current budget. As a taxpayer, I appreciate the care that has been taken to avoid overburdening the taxpayers. But it is, it is disheartening that the cost of this current proposed budget will adversely affect staff that have direct contact with our students. In our current climate, connections are so important to our students. As we strive to meet the social and emotional wellbeing of our students, reducing staff will have a negative effect on our students, especially in areas like library and music that allow the students to grow in this area through collaboration and intellectual freedom. These cuts also do not help us as a district as we strive to meet the goal and commitment to hire and retain a diverse staff and project and protect equality for our students. If we continue to practice the method of last in, first out, we will never achieve this goal of meeting the need to provide a diverse and equitable staff to our students. I implore you to take the time to rethink these cuts and I hope that you will strongly consider looking into those funds that have been added back into the budget. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. Susan Bloom, I'm gonna have to, you're using an older version of Zoom, so I'm gonna promote you to a panelist.
And now you should be able to unmute yourself. Let me turn off your video. So, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Susan Blum, sixty-eight Nicholas Avenue in West Orange. When I found out Mr. Santhy's middle Liberty School coral teaching position was in jeopardy, I was in total shock. He's been one of the most valuable teachers my daughter Rebecca has had. She had the wonderful honor of having Mr. Santhy two years in a row. He's creative, talented and dynamic. Rebecca and all the students look so forward to his classes. He's innovative and always doing new types of music with his students. He's been the most reliable person to help his students through the pandemic. His classes contributed greatly to helping her with her bout of COVID-related anxiety during this time as well. He's opened up a whole new world for my daughter with all the different genres of music he's given to her. She is able to read notes and can start singing with any sheet music. Without him, she would be unable to do this. I want other students to continue to have this opportunity as well. It would be impossible for a coral teacher going in between schools to give this type of individualized attention to each student. Rebecca has grown so much because of Mr. Santhy's dedication to each and every one of his students. He's been a vital part of Rebecca's growth during the past two years. There are no words to thank him for all he has done for her. He's, I am utterly appalled that a young man who puts his heart and soul into what he does and is so uniquely talented could even be in this position. I mean, there's so many intangibles with Mr. Santhy that he's a great teacher. I know tough financial decisions need to be made, but to me, Mr. Santhy is non-negotiable, period, end of story. This magnificent music teacher epitomizes what is great about the West Orange music programs. It is essential he remain as the Liberty Middle School Coral Teacher. I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Trig Scales, that is the end of public comment. There's nobody left.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cullen. I, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and, you know, you're all advocates. And we appreciate that. And, and I'm speaking for myself right now because the board will have a chance to speak for themselves later. But I have heard you loud and clear. I feel your passion. I, I, I hear your frustration. The board is going to be going back into executive session when we finish here tonight. And we want you to know that we have a clear understanding about some of the staff members that you spoke about this evening. That doesn't mean, and I'm not saying that we're going to change anything, but I want you to know that we feel, we feel you. I wanted to answer one of the questions about the board meetings and why we are not in public. We've had conversations about it and we felt that during this budget season that it would limit the number of people who may choose to participate. We've been running two hundred people for some of our meetings and we felt that it would be important to maintain that level of participation through this period of time. That does not mean that we won't be going into public. We have not figured out yet how to be able to have public in person and at the same time maintain the level of participation through Zoom meetings. We're looking at other districts to see how they are doing it and it is something that we will contemplate. But I, I just wanted to make that clear, that we intentionally have stayed in virtual so that we could maintain the level of participation because we wanted to. We also did not want to encourage large numbers of people to come out to meetings as we are trying to maintain any kind of safety and we're not trying to encourage any type of community spread. So I wanted to just respond to those two questions. And then, Dr. Casco, I will turn it over to you at this time. You're muted, Dr. Casco.
Thank you, Ms. President Trig Scales. And obviously a lot to process. I see that a number of folks have, have dropped off, which I, you know, which I think is unfortunate. You know, that they, they're not gonna have the opportunity to hear the administration of the board respond, though obviously I understand the late hour. You know, I'm not gonna go into a, a lot of detail about the budget. I want to give a few, a few kind of key, key points about it. And, you know, I think that the board, the administration really began the process of trying to illuminate for the community, you know, the, the, really the extraordinary challenges that are, that were faced this year relative to the budget. At, really earlier than, than maybe ever I've, I've done as, you know, as, as an administrator. I mean, we did our town hall, our budget town hall in December and we've had quite a number of presentations, you know, to try and outline that. I, I think it, it bears mentioning that, and I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I, I know this was part of their deliberations, was recognizing that, you know, that the pandemic has really, has really significantly impacted this community, all communities, but this community financially. We know that many folks have defaulted on rent payments. Um, we know that many folks have defaulted on rent payments. You know, the township is, you know, you're wondering the extent to which they'll have the adequate revenues to even disperse to the school. There's, I mean, there are very, very real financial challenges that exist in the township. And so I think the board was committed to try and um, you know, and minimize the impact on on the local taxpayers. Relative to these, these, these funds, and Mr. Maniscalc was correct, I did, I did allude to it in 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 an article in which I was quoted. You know, it's, it remains to be seen, you know, we we've, we we hear these promises of eight million and of course, like the S R two money. You know, whether it comes through, how much comes through, I mean, these are question marks and and they're not funds that we can necessarily base the balancing of a budget that we submit to the county on May third. Now, successive to the submission of that budget, that approval, that budget submission to the county, we may very well get those funds and then potentially reevaluate, you know, how we might utilize that, including the reinstatement of of staff who were previously cut for budgetary reasons. But we can't, we can't balance a budget based upon that money. I will tell you that we are we do know what our allocation is through S R two. We have the grant application for that. And so that's a much more definitive process and number. A- and we actually have shifted a number of of expenses that were originally in the local budget into that S R two grant, um, including um the um learning loss, including mental health supports, but also some critical technology expenses and some critical uh HVAC remediations. Uh, we we've done some calculations and we have about three point two million dollars worth of additional HVAC remediations and those are automating the remaining unit events. Now, we could punt another year on that and we would be okay. And insta- the installation of mechanical ventilation in spaces that presently don't have them and thus are not being used, which is critical for next year. So these are all additional expenses. Now, um, we, we started our, our budget with increases of nine million four hundred thousand dollars approximately. Um, and those were including projected salary increases. We're in the midst of negotiating three collective bargaining agreements. Twenty-six percent increases in transportation, um, as high as fourteen percent increases in 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 prescription, eleven percent in medical, nine percent dental. All of these ultimately added up to about nine million dollars. Now, true, we, we got a a some great assistance from the state and we got more state aid than we were originally projecting in the early stages of this budget. We ended up um getting um a total of uh five, five million seven hundred thirty-five dollars in state aid. Now, this at the one point five percent, which is what the bu- the the board uh came to consensus on, that still left us with two, over two million dollars, almost two, two million one hundred thousand dollars in cuts that needed to be made. Um, I will tell you, and I and I could be honest with you, that the, the, you know, the, the, the discretionary lines are as cut as really as, as, as close to the bone as we can do it without really disabling us from being able to to fund from a supply and material standpoint our programs. And I think it's important to kind of see some of these numbers in perspective, and they're all reflected in the budgetary presentations that are, you know, that are up on the website and that were previously presented, which is that in a budget, a proposed budget of a hundred seventy-seven million dollars, right off the bat, fifty-seven percent of those are a hundred two million dollars of that one seventy-seven or salaries. Another almost sixteen percent of that is estimated benefits costs, which are about twenty-eight million dollars. So that's about a hundred thirty million dollars right off the bat in salaries and benefits. About sixteen million dollars in special education costs, seven million in transportation. But I think when you look at the discretionary line, which is really that instruction and support line, it it's about six million dollars and represents three point six six percent of the total operating budget. That is really the line in which we can recognize our efficiencies and we cut twenty percent of that, of of twenty percent or ten percent of those lines in the budget. You know, when we presented the proposed budget on the eighteenth, the proposed budget included the cutting of nine certificated positions and twelve un- non-certificated positions. Now, in between the proposed budget and now, we actually went back to the drawing board, went back into our lines, cut them further, and were able to save a number of positions um that were originally proposed for cutting. There, y- y- you know, all right, so so let's talk about the, let's, let's, let's clarify some things about these administrative positions. First, I'd just like to clarify that that it's, it's, it's not three positions. It is, it is one, um, but I will tell you that that represents a, a net loss of one administrative position. Um, we are due to restructuring and combining, but admittedly, the district director of of uh diversity equity inclusion would represent um a, a salary that could, that we could forego and could be put into um fu- you know, uh, funding, you know, cut staff positions. You know, and 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 we can consider that and it will help, but it certainly will not offset all the other staff cuts that have been proposed. The, you know, the the reality of it is, is that West Orange, like every public school district, and to some extent, you know, because of the numbers that I quoted you, this, this is an annual exercise. It's an annual exercise. And so, so if the cutting of staff is mutually exclusive with the creation of an additional administrative position, then, then we never will add another administrative position. Then maybe that's, maybe that's the reality. Because the reality of it is, is to balance budgets in this day and age cannot be done by cutting uh instructional supplies and paper clips and paper. This is the very real challenges that we, we find ourselves in 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 public schools. You know, we, w- w- we made cuts which um, which, which we felt we could do without eliminating programming. Not, not suggesting that the continuing delivery of those programs would not perhaps be more challenging, but that it could be done. Certainly does not um, you know, speak to a lack of 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 value placed in those programs, but simply a way in which we could move those pro- continue those programs um without having to cut them entirely. You know, so um, you know, the, where we are at the one point five percent, I I I can tell you, um, and I and and the central office team, and and it's hard, it's hard to hear some of the criticism. I'll be honest with you because you know, and and my cabinet members can speak to this. You know, that was at the forefront of all of our efforts was to try and create a budget where we didn't have to cut any positions. We, we did our level best to do that. And I think that with all the things, and at the same time, and I just a final point is, you know, I think it's important to realize that this budget also includes the creation of full-time teaching positions. This budget actually contains the creation of seven full-time certificated teaching positions or s- s- certificated positions, um, four special education teachers, uh, two interventionists, one at Edison School and one at Liberty and um and an occupational therapist. So e- even while we're trying to maintain program, we also have increasing needs from a staff standpoint. So there are so many different moving parts um to to how how we balance this, but certainly we can, you know, we can reconsider some things a- and see what we can do. And I I don't have um really much more to say on the budget. At this time, I'm gonna go back into my notes here and see if there's and and there were any other specific questions that uh merited mentioning. Those are just kind of some top of minds. I apologize. You know, it's, it's been a long night and there was a lot said, but those are just some thoughts that came to mind. Right, right, just one other point is, is, you know, I think with respect to our, our HR director, you know, I can tell you that um, you know, I and, you know, the um, you know, the members of my cabinet members work extremely hard, um, you know, um, and um, you know, Dr. Vesbignoni, um, you know, we have fifteen hundred employees. That's, that, that's a big organization with 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 a lot of personnel and human resources needs. And I can tell you that there is presently, there isn't enough time in the day to get done everything that we need to do, to get done from a human resource standpoint because there is a lot of systems work to be done in West Orange. In fact, you know, I I think that's really, tho- those are the areas, those are the levels in which West Orange really, I think, has the most room for improvement on the systems level, um, including in 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 human resources. You know, but in the event that, um, you know, between now and when we approve the finalized budget, you know, we will, you know, we will, we will continue to work very hard to try and move forward the initiatives that that we're trying to get done, um, whether we have the additional staff or not, and that that you can count on. You know, I I would, you know, relative to the intentionality piece, and obviously we're always open to feedback and 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 we know we can always improve. You know, but, you know, I would go back into some of the, some of the presentations we've done and reflect some of the, the work that we've done already in the area of diversity and equity. And, you know, I would argue that, you know, we, we have been intentional in our trainings, in our goal setting, um, and in the way we've approached hiring. And and right, and I, 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 no one is fr- is as frustrated as, as our human resources department or me that, you know, when we have to cut staff, like, you know, so some will, if, as long as we continue to go with this last in, you know, last in first out, well, u- unfortunately, that's those, and I know some say, well, you know, you know, hiding behind the regulations, but those are the regulations. So you like, if, if we have to cut staff, you know, that's, that's, that's what happens. And trust me, it's extremely frustrating as the person that's being held accountable for moving that needle. I am as frustrated as anyone by that. You, you know, um, as far as um, as far as bank cap goes, um, you know, so, so bank cap can only be used if the board goes uh to to cap. So the board would need to go, like, for example, last year, we used, we used some bank cap and we used just under a million dollars in bank cap. And I think the percentage increase was under three. I think it was like two seven nine or something like that. And we used about a million dollars in bank cap. You know, this year, due to the fini- financial situation, the board really charged the administration, you know, with, with being as, as fiscally conservative as possible, and we came in at one point five. Um, and there were still plenty of folks in the community that felt that that was not fiscally responsible enough, right? So, um, you know, in order to go to bank cap, we'd have to go up to two percent and then, you know, we, we could go, I think we have as much as three or Ms. Flowers, we have what, three and a half million dollars in bank cap that we could potentially use this year?
Yes, that's correct.
You know, and that would probably represent between what, maybe a four or five percent increase?
About, I can do that calculation and, but roughly, yeah.
Approximately a four or five percent increase in the tax levy. And that's just not something that, you know, that, you know, and really, you know, really as the administration felt that that was i- in these economic times that we could, we could put, put on the shoulders of the community. I'll let the board speak to that a little bit more. You know, as far as, um, you know, um, then with that, I would just kind of transition over to, over to school reopening. So, you know, a- and I, and I, I heard the numbers mentioned and I saw that, you know, that tweet came out from the Department of Education today that there are about a hundred sixty school districts that are in uh, in, in person and there's about five hundred seventy-something that, you know, continue to be hybrid. So, you know, we find ourselves in kind of that, that category. You know, as far as the elementary piece goes, you know, we, you know, we are moving forward with that. You know, we have um moved forward to the four half days. We are discussing adding Fridays tomorrow in our principal meetings. And I indicated that we'd have some advisories forthcoming. I i- in terms of the plan for next year, the, the plan is, is we, we go, you know, basically, we go every day full days. And we, we've already, we already have all the procedures in place. Um, we've, we've done it. I mean, it's just a matter, it's really just a matter of putting more kids in schools. I mean, that's, it's, it's really as simple as that. I will tell you that going to full days this year, and there's one, and I mentioned it before in my, you know, in my report, there is one fundamental challenge that exists with at this point in time, going to full days on the elementary level. And if we were to go to a full day on the elementary level, that would mean that we would have to once again change our high school schedule back to seven thirty. So we would be taking that, you know, the high school uh staff, the high school students, and we would be once again turn- turning their schedule upside down again. And the reason that is, is the reason we originally changed it was for this, what I mentioned about the sanitization of the buses in between runs. Obviously, next year, we would have to have our runs operating, you know, typically, as we would in a regular brick and mortar year, and that would obviously avoid that issue. But that would be, that was, would be what it would require this year is we would have to change our high school schedule back to seven thirty um in order to do that. So there are some real, you know, logistic challenges with that, with making that kind of transition. And, you know, and listen, it, it took us some time to get in. And, you know, we, unfortunately, we weren't able to get in until mid-January for reasons that we've, we've discussed ad nauseam. You know, and since we did get in, um, we've been making an effort to get in more. You know, um, so I, I've said it, I, you know, I've said it in in emails to which I've responded. From what I understand, I'm, I'm getting together with some, some folks on, on Friday. Um, you know, there's a, you know, Zoom being set up from folks who are like minds about school reopening, and I plan to have some administrators join me. And on that note, what I would say to folks is, and I'm happy to respond to emails and I'm happy to give my perspective as the superintendent. But as I've said in some of these emails, and, you know, times it's been, you know, kind of, I would argue unfairly construed as me passing the buck. But, you know, the reality of it is, is that, is that I, I don't make decisions unilaterally. It's, it's never been the way I've led. And it's, and it's, up until this year, it's been a relatively successful formula for me to have my decisions informed by the practitioners, by the people on the grounds doing the work. And, you know, I, I, I think it's a misconception to think that, you know, that, 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 you know, that there aren't real challenges that are being brought to me and not, not simply by teachers, but by the administrative team. And so, you know, if you are, if you're a, a parent of a middle school student or the parent of a high school student, I do encourage you to reach out also to your building administrators and speak to them because they're the ones that are down in the trenches figuring out the logistics of getting kids in and why, for example, at this point in time. Because you have to know that I have gone to building leaders to 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 knock this around and say, why is it at this present time, we're not able to get to get more students in? So I, I encourage you to continue to reach out to your building principals as well. And final point, um, you know, is you know, and I've said this on a number of occasions, which is, you know, our responsibility to, to each individual student in understanding whether it's the present format of school is mode of operation is not adequately servicing them socially, emotionally, or is not adequately serving them academically, we still have a responsibility to not simply just mainsta- maintain the status quo. And I don't necessarily mean that in terms of days or time in school, although it could mean that as well if it's determined that your child needs that, right? But that responsibility to your child and bridging i- i- in giving them whatever additional they need right now, that's still in play, right? And so, you know, when I, when I respond to some emails and I say, listen, um, you know, um, yes, I, I'm here to support and do what I can as the superintendent, but you have staff members, teachers, principals, guidance counselors, student assistance counselors, child study team members, therapists. We have teams of people that are there and at, and where we all collectively now have an obligation to 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 stop the learning loss or to accelerate or whatever the case may be. And so I, I encourage you to continue to engage in that kind of dialogue with those staff members. So let me, let me say it again. We're moving towards more time this year. There'll be additional updates at the end of this week. And our, and our intent for next year is that we are going to offer parents who want it every day, all day. Now, you know, y- you have to understand and respect, I hope, that right now, we're still in the thick of managing this school year. Um, a- and while we've, you know, we've begun some initial planning for September, we're not there yet. We will be there soon enough. And we understand that there are parents that are making, having to make decisions about private school. There are parents that are even making decisions about whether they want to stay in the town, and you need that information sooner rather than later. But I've said it publicly, I've responded in emails multiple times. That is the end game. The governor has said it. That is the end game for next year. That's what we're planning for. I'm not making excuses. I'm not putting up roadblocks. I'm stating deliberately and definitively, that is our goal for next year. That is what we're planning towards. So, um, I look forward to, I, I understand there's almost two hundred people I'll be meeting with on Friday, so I look forward to that. Um, and with that, um, let me just double check that I have, there weren't any um kind of sidebars here that I should address. Ms. Trig Scale is usually good at um reminding me if there's things I haven't addressed.
There was a question about graduation.
Right.
And then Ms. Redwine had the idea about we love our West Orange schools.
So my understanding of the graduation now, um, and again, I think that's a, you know, that's a good example of a question that I think is uh as effectively posed, you know, to the high school administration, that it has been a topic of conversation and an agenda item on the meetings, particularly with secondary principals. That it has been a topic of conversation and an agenda item on the meetings, particularly with secondary principals, is how they're approaching those events. I know that in all cases, they are planning onsite events, including at the middle schools. And are planning them based upon the current guidelines for outdoor gatherings. Because it's very difficult to plan multiple, for multiple contingencies and events like this. When the conditions may or may not change. So presently, from what I understand is, is that there would be. Multiple ceremonies, but they would do, they would need to do fewer ceremonies than they did last year. But I would encourage any high school students or parents. To, you know, to reach out to the high school administration on that, or the middle school administration, you know, through your PTAs. You know, those are good questions to raise at PTA meetings and understand where they are currently with their planning for that. And I do understand from that, you know, Governor Murphy will be really releasing, you know, updated guidance on that. We hope we get that soon, because, you know, we need, we need to move on planning. I I think that's the other thing for folks to understand is, is none of this is, none of these plans are easy, right? And and so even planning for one of these types of events is extremely complex. So planning for two of those things simultaneously, one of which may or may not happen. It's, 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 it's difficult. So we hope we get, you know, updated guidance from him soon. And and if we do, then, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to offer, you know, one ceremony onsite for all students. And obviously, that's, that would be ideal for everyone. And my understanding is that there is a prom being planned. With no dancing. You know, it is whole new, whole new meaning to leave room for the Holy Ghost, leaving for two, two Holy Ghosts actually in between. Anyway, I guess.
Maybe line dancing.
Line dance, yeah, socially distanced line dancing, right? So that's, that's, anything else, Ms. Trig scales, you feel I might have worked out?
Just on a positive note, Ms. Redwine's idea about the magnetic bumper stickers that say, we love our West Orange schools.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I love the positivity. You know, I think we need more of that. And I I still, I still believe that, you know, that the school district has, has a lot about which to be proud. I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of great things going on here. Obviously, we have areas in which we can improve. You know, and and as I've said before in my emails, Ms. Trig scales, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to put us up on a pedestal as exemplary. You know, but, you know. You know, I I truly, you know, do not feel that, that this district has, has been, has been a failure this year. We've had challenges. We've overcome them. We've moved forward. We've continued to move forward. And we will continue to do that next year. So, but yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, obviously, you know, perhaps that's something we can work with the council of PTAs or the PTAs to fundraise. It's not something that, you know, we we're permissible to to fund out of our district lines. So maybe it's something we could do some fundraising for.
Great. And in the interest of time, thank you, Dr. Kascun. We're going to move into board members' reports. And again, I want to thank the 78 people who are hanging in there with us. We're about to move into another day. So at this time, Ms. Huerta, would you like to get us started?
Thank you, Mrs. President Terry Chik scales. Thank you, Dr. Kascun, and thank you to all of the people who, the community members and the. The ones that are still with us and the ones that were with us for even a brief amount of time. And I thank you to the parents that have been like very persistent and very consistent in advocating for the children. Advocating and voicing their concerns and their desires. And I think that, you know, with the virtual has provided that. And I don't know, I I'm, I'm new to the board, but I don't. My colleagues have a bit more experience in what board mem, board meetings looked like before, right? Virtual and and the turnout and the participation in in those, in that world, right? I think that. Even with the amount of people, the 200 some odd parents and family member, uh, community members that were. Here tonight, there's still has so much work to be done in, in, in helping to empower all of our parents to participate. And and to be vocal and to have that confidence and and to want to participate and and be comfortable in participating. So just reiterating that, you know, PTAs and and being involved, it's not just. What was our, it's not just, it's more than cookies and bake sales, right? And it's very much a lot of dedication that goes through, you know, to being an advocate for your child. And whatever short amount of time or, you know, a larger amount of dedication that you can put towards that. Is all appreciated and it's all, doesn't go unrecognized. So thank you very much. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mrs. Terry Chik scales.
You're welcome, Ms. Melinda Huerta. Okay, and Ms. Merklinger?
Sure. Um, so I I actually have a lot of questions and a lot of items that I just wanted to touch on. You know, the first thing is, I'm one of those folks that feels that if you made a mistake that you should own it and and. Or if you recognize that you've done something or said something to insult someone, you know, to own that and and apologize for it. So I think it was maybe last board meeting or two board meetings ago. We were talking about Fridays, and I unintentionally insulted some of our faculty, and that was not intentional. I do think that we have some room for improvement on our Fridays at our elementary school levels. But in no way, shape or form did I mean to disregard, disregard the efforts that our, our staff and faculty have made for Fridays and and teaching. But, you know, I do see the disparity amongst the schools and among levels and what instruction students have. So I don't want to. I don't want to discount anything that parents are feeling or seeing either, but I did not, I did want to apologize for any faculty that felt. That I was not engaged with what they were doing. So I do apologize for that. Um, in regards to the budget and and some of the things that were going on, I, you know, I've mentioned this before. I was not in agreement with creating the new two positions. In fact, I think I was the only one who wrote it, no. Um, so I did want to just point out that I think, you know, as a board, we do need to hit the pause button. There's a lot of moving parts, and that's not on anyone's fault, right? There's, you know, who, what funding we might may be getting, what funding we could, what it can be used for. And there's a lot of great ideas about, you know, what to do for our district, because we do want to maintain the level, I think, of. You know, our landscape, we don't want to change it. We don't want to, we don't want to change what makes West Orange so great and unique. But with that, we do have to make tough decisions. So I think what we need to do as a board, and this is just my personal opinion, is kind of hit the pause button, take a step back. Take inventory of everything that we have going on and look at what we actually can afford to do, what we need to do. And just really fine tune some of the preliminary, you know, preliminary budget is just that it's preliminary. And I think, you know, in the past, we've had workshops in between going into the final budget. So I would like to recommend that we do, do something along those lines. Just to kind of, just hit that pause button, take a breath. We've heard a lot from a lot of folks this evening. And just kind of take that into account as we look at what our, you know, final budget will look like. One of the interesting things that I think came out, so the NEA puts out a monthly magazine. And one of the things that they noted was 11 million school days lost. So UCLA Civil Rights Projects released a national analysis called Lost Opportunities. And what I thought was interesting, it said that. The rate of instruction of lost instruction in secondary schools is more than five times higher in elementary school. 37 days lost per 100 middle and high school students compared with only seven days per 100 elementary school students. And it goes on to explain about the different rates amongst diverse students. So your persons of color. Genders, boys versus girls. And it goes into a lot of the different diversity statistics that are occurring. And so one of the questions I know that's kind of out there is how are we going to assess learning loss? And I think Dr. Kascun mentioned, and and Ms. Dominguez mentioned that we're going to get a presentation on the 10th. So I'm really happy to hear about that, because I was not aware of that one. So I'm hoping to hear how we're going to account for this learning loss that we're hearing so much about. One of the other items that I've heard bits and pieces about is about an online virtual school. I don't know if there's any truth to that, and hopefully, Dr. Kascun can kind of speak to it and kind of either shut down the rumors or explain or expand a little bit more on what's going on with that. I did want to point out Gregory is having a, just, you know, some of the positive things going on in town. Aside from the, the shows will go on, there's also Gregory's having a bingo at night on Friday outdoors. There's also a virtual project or a virtual presentation on. Safe driving called Share the Keys, and I think that was just put out on our school website. And then in the interest of time, because I know it's now 12:04, I'll just leave it at that. But those were just some of the items that I wanted to touch on, and and I can email the rest of my questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Dr. Kascun, did you want to answer?
Sure.
Anything?
Sure. So, so, all right, so. The, the idea of, of having. The idea of having teachers that. That serve exclusively virtual students. Is a concept. That's born, that's born out of two. Factors. One is that we know that the. The exercise of hybrid teaching is inherently difficult. Complex. Yeah. I mean, I think our, our educators have done an amazing job of, you know, of adjusting and adapting. And and getting better at it, which I knew they would. But still, it it remains a challenge for for a lot of reasons. It's not ideal. And two is the fact that. Based upon what I said previously. If we're bringing a lot of kids in our school next year, they're probably not going to be three feet apart. Now, maybe that doesn't matter to the people who are sending their kids in, and I'm not suggesting that it has to. But it might to others. It might to others. There might be parents who are not comfortable with sending their child in and and having them 18 inches from another student. Okay? So the question, you know, and of course, we know that the governor, is, is that going to be a definitive no? And so, or or not, you know, if it's a definitive no. Then, then it's a moot point. Then we don't even need to discuss the idea of having virtual teachers, except for in rare cases where we have students who have a medical fragility or something of that nature. If the answer is yes, then the question becomes, how do we most effectively service those virtual students? While not diminishing the experience, you know, for either the students that are in or out. And one possibility is potentially having some teachers that are, when possible, when it works. From a student cohort standpoint, having only virtual students. Now, we don't, we don't have any money in the, in, in, in the general fund to fund those. So also critical to that is that the American Rescue Act comes through and we get the money we said we were going to get. And we could potentially utilize that, if allowable, to fund some of those virtual teachers. But it is by no means a definitive concept, any more than it's definitive that. Students will have the opportunity to be virtual or not, or will get the money or not. So all of those are question marks. But it is a concept that I think has some merit for those reasons.
So can I just ask a follow up question to that then?
Sure.
So, you know, back in, back in November, we took the hybrid option off the table. So families were kind of forced to make decisions, do a quick reroute. Our essential workers basically had to find childcare. What is the difference between, you know, that and now where the governor is saying? You have to open full time, virtual's off the table. So now we're in the opposite way, right? Now we're being put into the mode of, no, it is full day, it's onsite, you're in person. Virtual is kind of the option now. So, and this is not meant offensively or to to question anyone, but shouldn't our thought process be the opposite now? We're planning to go back to, shouldn't we be planning to go back to school as we normally would in September? With, hey, if we have to pivot because the governor changes the rules. Kind of like November, you know, we saw increases or whatnot, so we had to pivot. Is that kind of where you see us going right now, or are you saying?
Yeah.
We're going to stay where we are and hope to go back full time? Just, just to get some clarity for folks that are kind of asking, where are we actually heading in?
Sure. You know, I I think presently, we're, we're heading towards brick and mortar. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything to, you know, to kind of do some kind of research and development and thought process. On, you know, what a virtual option might look like. You know, and obviously, you know, those, those question marks that exist right now will be answered soon enough. And, you know, and if we no longer need to pursue two thought processes, then we won't. But I think the, you know, the process right now is that it's brick and mortar. Again, I think unless somehow the pandemic magically disappears. I don't think the governor can force people to send their kids to school if we're not. If we can't guarantee that we're in alignment with the Department of Health guidelines. Because I know that for some folks, that's not really a concern, and that's okay. But for others, they're, they are, that is a concern. And so if we can't guarantee that our student attendance is based upon that, I would argue, and this is just my opinion. I don't think that the governor can force parents to send their kids to school if we're not aligned with the DOH guidelines. So, but, so, so that's kind of a, a future thought, but at the same time, brick and mortar is the end game. Brick and mortar is the end game.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kascun. Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you. I don't really have much to say, but just wanted to thank everyone who came out tonight and spoke so passionately to advocate for. Some of the positions. And we do hear you, and I just want to assure you of that. And thank you for, for hanging in there for those of you who are still on with us. So. That'll be all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you. Just one last plug for the, for the high school musical. Please go to the, the Board of Ed website, woboe.org. There's a banner for it on the homepage and. Turn out and support them in that. And then a couple of quick thoughts just after, after this evening. As odd as it may sound to say at 12:11 after a long meeting, and this has been a challenging one. What a genuine honor it is to be involved in something that's so heart wrenching and so important. I spend a lot of time in passionate disagreement with people over things that are not anywhere near as important as what we're talking about tonight. And. As challenging as it can feel sometimes to be challenged by members of the community. It also is very affirming to know how passionately people feel and how deeply important all of these issues are. Our public schools are critical and cuts hurt real employees and they hurt real children. New roles are not frivolous. They're intended to correct wrongs that have existed for a long time and to make improvements where improvements have been needed. Tax increases hurt many people in the community very, very deeply. And there are very few people who I think consider compromise a victory. This is really messy stuff. I've said it before. But I'm grateful to live in a community with people who will stay up late and wait a long time to speak out for the arts, to speak out for. Library services, to speak out for any number of services because they're important. And because they benefit our children and they benefit our communities. Just as I am, you know, grateful to the people who have turned out on past meetings to advocate for us. Doing all we can to cut and to keep taxes low in a time when so many are hurting. It's a balancing act. There's no big victories here, except that we'll push forward and we'll continue to do the best that we can for the children in this community. So, thank you all.
So well said, Mr. Rothstein. And, you know, this is gut wrenching stuff that we go through here. And we were so resolute in, in keeping the taxes down. And and maybe in our laser focus to do that, we missed some other things along the way. And so, again, we thank you for bringing that to us tonight, and we're not going home. And, um, we're not going home. We're going to work. Just a few things coming up. Earth Day is Thursday. We've got Administrative Professionals Day on Wednesday. Dr. Kascun reminded us that Asian American Pacific Islanders Month is May. And May 3rd through 7th is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, followed by May 6th through 12th, uh, which is Nurses Week. And so we have a lot to celebrate and we do love our staff and we appreciate everything that they do every day. And they do go above and beyond. And so at this time, I think I have to get a motion to go into executive session. Is that correct? Okay, thank you, Ms. Huerta. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good night, everyone. And thank you so much for being.
I just want to confirm, you're not coming back to public to do any business after executive?
You're correct.
All right. So then, once I end this meeting, just so everybody is aware, the recording will stop and there will be no public action, no action taken by the board until the next board meeting.
Correct. Thank you so much, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you.